Welcome to the March 27th Select Board meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance since the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So before we do introductions here, I just want to let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded, broadcast live on Facebook, and it will be available upon demand for our local cable station ECAT. And as you probably saw on the sign on the way in, we have no iPhones in front of us now. They're all in the room. So it picks up everything, whispers, and just wanted to let everybody know. So there's no hot mic moments here. And with that, I'm just going to go around and have the board members introduce themselves.
Jennifer Stacy.
Mark Lynn.
I'm Doty Fulgenetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And we have Connor Reed, downtown administrator, and Elizabeth Beck, our executive assistant. Select Board member Jamie Stevens is not able to be here with us tonight, and we will make note of that. So the first item that we have is a timed public hearing for a politician from National Grid in Verizon, New England, Plan 306-59699 at 21 South Street. Craig, if you want to read the public hearing letter.
The Select Board of Easton and its licensing authorities, suing to Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing in the Colleen-Acorona Boardroom 136, Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, March 27, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. to consider an act on petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon, Inc., Incorporated to install one J O pole on South Street, relocate one J O pole on South Street, beginning at a point approximately five feet north of the centerline of the intersection of Paquanica Avenue and continuing approximately 410 feet in an east direction. The location of existing pole three, South Street, to make room for a new residential development, Old Forge Lane, pole three will become the new riser pole to feed the development. A midspan pole two dash 50 will be needed to avoid aerial trespassing to house number 21, South Street. In accordance with the petition, the plan number 306-59699, dated in March 8, 2023, is shown on file with the Select Board's office.
Great. Do we have someone from that suburb here tonight? Who want to come up to the table?
Sure.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Quentin Crowell. I'm an engineer from National Grid.
Thank you, Quentin. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Um, yes.
No.
I don't know.
Not at the moment.
So I'll bring you up when we won't ask you anything, right? But, um, well, I know we do have somebody from the public who lives in that neighborhood. Dale, did you have any questions?
I did. May, should I sit down or just stand?
You can, you do right from there.
Okay. So Dale cares for 21 South Street, so I am the house on the corner. And I was aware of the National Grid folks when they came out to lay this plan. Originally, I read the language of the petition. We thought the pole was going to be placed on the opposite side by 16 South Street, sort of towards the front door. And we were concerned about that. This is actually the lesser of the two evils. So I'm fine with the petition. I understand from the petition, it talks about the sketch identifying the approximate locations. My hope is when the work is actually done, that to the extent that there's any wiggle room on this, that the pole that's in front of the new development can be, if it's moved up a little bit, so that this pole can be placed more on the side of House 11. Possible, I understand may not be possible. But if there is any wiggle room when that, when that work is done. I understand there's supposed to be some sort of the guideline on the pole over here. So in any event, our hope is that that can be done. But the principal reason I came is just to ask the Board of Selectmen if they can at the appropriate time refer the new intersections being placed here to the town's traffic safety committee. An issue we raised with planning and zoning with all the public hearings for the new development is there's going to be a, a new road coming in to the extension. If you're coming from Paquanica, it'll be coming straight across. So in the past, this was just simply a curve in the road. So what's going to end up happening is the traffic that will be traveling straight from Paquanica into the new development will be going across a lane of traffic. And I, my hope is that the town's traffic safety committee will consider safety of the intersection, the possibility of perhaps having a stop sign, two stop signs, so that you don't have folks traversing across a lane of traffic. There will be a stop sign coming out of the development, but the concern is going this way. So I'm just asking at some point in time if the town can refer to the traffic safety committee before the new road is opened.
Sure. But where, where are the, the plans actually get a traffic light there? So that's, they're already thinking about that. And I'm sure there'll be mitigation before that happens. That, that won't be going in, you know, in the next six months or anything. But we are in the design phase of that.
That's for Paquanica.
That's, yeah, that's a 106.
Yeah, referring to the actual elbow of South Street. So that was pure, that was reviewed by Planning Board as part of it. We can certainly make a referral. But as you may know, they're going to look at existing data and warrants under the MUTCD standard from federal government and Mastot. And I can't say that we'll say, but usually placing stop signs more than what is already going to be required leaving could have unintended negative consequences on backfield on foundry street and things of that major. So it's not guaranteed, but we can have a look at it.
Yeah, all I'm asking is just to have them considered. You know, my, my home office is right on the corner. I watch people come flying around the corner, especially in the mornings and the traffic times. And they're going to be crossing a lane of traffic. And people are not going to realize that they're crossing a lane of traffic. So all we're asking for is just to have it considered.
Is there a stop sign there now, Dave?
There are no stop signs here, no. It's, it's just a right angle.
Let's see how you vote not have a stop sign there.
So I can, but it's, it's, we can have, we'll have D W T.
Yeah, just at the appropriate time. And I don't know whether it should be, I guess it's David Field and the police and fire chiefs, I think, who are on that traffic safety committee. So I just wanted to bring it to the potential of the Board of Selectmen. But my intent is to make that request to see if they can come out and take a look at it and just assess whether it might be appropriate or not.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, well, if there's no other questions, can I get a motion to, to accept the pole petition from National Grid at Verizon, New England, Plan 306-59699 at 21 South Street?
So move Barger, second land.
Barger and Lynn, all in favor?
That was easy.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
No problem.
And thank you, Neil, for coming to bring out the issues. All right, item number two, 605, our public hearing is for Sri Lax Meat Corporation doing business at Spots, Fine Wines and Spirits for a change in location of a section 15 off premises all alcohol beverages license from 646 Washington Street, Unit 67 and 8 Eastern to 646 Washington Street, Unit 3 Eastern. So Craig, if you'd like to brief that.
The Select Board of Easton as licensing authority will hold a public hearing in the Colleen-Acorona Boardroom 136, Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, March 27, 2023, at 6:05 p.m. to consider an act upon the application of Sri Lax Meat Corporation doing business as Scott's Fine Wines and Spirits for a change in location of a section 15 off premises all alcohol beverage, beverages license from 646 Washington Street, Units 6, 7, and 8 Eastern, Mass. to 646 Washington Street, Unit 3, Eastern, Mass. in accordance with plan, with plans on the file in the Select Board's office.
Do we have someone else to come up?
Sir, for the board's benefit, while the applicant and I come forward, you may remember that this is a business that you've already approved a change of location for. The permanent location at 646 Washington is not ready for move-in. And under the state's regulations, although this will be, I think, immediately next door in the same physical structure, it still needs to go through this process. So this has been reviewed by all the town departments, and we are supportive of it.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. So people at home are watching this, and they're going to want to know when you're moving and where you're moving. And I'm sure you have a lot of customers that are following this and, you know, interested and curious. So if you wanted to just tell us, you know, when will this happen? When do you think you're getting the new space?
New space, I think, I hate the landlord said the, the original unit six, seven, eight, it's going to take like two, two, three months.
Could be four months, right?
So landlord is not sure. He's trying to make up everything ready and trying to pick the ball as the public goes. And temporarily, so he's giving us this space to Unit 3, while he's ready. I think he should be ready around July or something like that he was telling us. So he just wants to give us that extra space while the other space is ready. And the current location at 669, where I have the present license right now, he wants me to move if we can. So that's the power.
Come that fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
Well, I just, I, you know, I just think that this is something that small businesses face that, you know, as consumers, we don't really think about. Like, it's just like, you know, magic. This store opens up, everything goes well. So, uh, you know, I, I feel your pain in having to do two moves. Uh, it, but on the other hand, it's great that there's a space available for you to do that.
That's good thing, yes.
And, um, I think it will probably be well worth the wait when you get your bigger location and, and you have, um, you know, a nice brand new built-up place.
That's true. With everything new.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Let's move on.
Thank you. Okay.
We're glad you're still doing business in Easton, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So we might coming there again, right? For the upperformer?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be another, same thing. And hopefully we'll have you all squared up.
Okay. Generally, if you have a ribbon cutting in, make sure you invite. So if I can get a, a motion to accept the, um, the change for Sri Lax Meat Corporation as noted in the agenda.
So move Barger, second land.
Barger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck. A few one-day liquor licenses that we'll go through pretty quickly. So we have a one-day liquor license for lobby venue at 574 Washington Street for a private confirmation party on May 6, 2023, from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And a private baby shower on May 20, 2023, 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Police detail is not required for that. Any comments or questions? Can I get a motion?
So move Barger, second land.
Barger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. The next one is Stonehill College at 320 Washington Street. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven events. So first one, women's swimming banquet, April 16, 2023, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The cross-country track and field alumni event, April 29, 2023, 11:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. The Hope anniversary dinner, April 30, 2023, 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The baseball alumni and family day, May 13, 2023, 11:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Mead Hall reunion weekend, June 2, 2023, 7:30 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. The Alumni Hall reunion weekend, June 2, 2023, 8:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. And the main quad reunion weekend, June 3, 2023, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And the Eastern police detail is not required for these either. So any comments or questions on any of these?
Move the slate.
Yes.
Move to, move to approve the slate from Stonehill College, second land.
So that's Barger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. The next item up is item four for our updated discussion, Colonial Power Group, Easton's Community Choice Energy Aggregation Plan.
So while our aggregation solos are coming up from the board's background, as you'll recall, we entered into a community choice energy aggregation plan for this rate of supply for all of our basic rate payers back in February of 2020. And that began in November of 2020, and it was locked in at roughly 10 cents a kilowatt hour supply cost through this coming November 23. We did it at the time for price stability and given the option for 100% renewable supply and hopefully to net a small amount of savings. This has worked out quite well for the community, particularly against winter rates right now from grid. And we're, we're pretty pleased with the program and our work with Colonial. And as we're heading into spring, we wanted to have Colonial back in and just give a, a kind of a brief update on the, how the program has performed and lay out some next steps for getting ready to potentially go back to market again for another multi-year rate lock.
Great. Good evening. Mark Capo, Colonial Power, Fionn Wood Lab, Marlborough, Mass.
Denise Allen, also from Colonial Power.
So tonight, just a lot of good news. So you've been shielded from some horrific rate from National Grid. There were 33, 891. You had a contract that kind of had a stable rate right through 10-3, as the administrator said. Right now, we just got the numbers. I, I still haven't even delivered them yet. They just need to be checked. But just for savings, since the program began, $5,193,000. And given the extenuated circumstances, the rates, right now, you're saving about $1.3 million a month. That will happen right through May. Just depends on usage. And then National Grid has also came out with their, just come out with their summer rates, which are 14.1, which is more like a, which is much better than the 34 cents. I'm going to be wrong. But much like a winter rate in the past. So the savings will be pretty good over the summertime, right through the November timeframe. So where does that leave us? We're here in front of you, hoping that we can get you to approve the administrator to take some indicative pricing. And all that is, is take a look at the market coming up and see where the curve is. So believe it or not, knock on wood here, the, the curve has actually come way down from where it was. The 10-cent rates aren't out there any longer. I don't think they're coming back at any time soon. The renewable portfolio standard, which is part of the, um, the price in this, you know, so we all have renewables, continues to step up, which, which is a good thing. It just comes at a cost. And I, you know, some of that means higher rates for all of us. But even that the, even that the price of natural gas has come down, we're still not seeing rates, you know, back at the 10-cent rate. We expect, the worst thing about a great contract is the next contract. And that's what we're here to talk about. So I would expect right now we're going to see rates somewhere in 13, 14 cents, which from here is a 30 or 40% increase. But as you can see, almost at that summer rate, that's what we're kind of seeing now. What we want to do is get your load out in front of all suppliers, get your stacks loaded so that they can price. We can take a look and see where we are and then make a decision about whether or not we want to do something two years or three years. Clearly, the three years has been very beneficial. But we're at historic lows in the marketplace. That was a no-brainer for us sitting here. You know, like, how do you go wrong at 10-cent power? Whether or not we do something multi-year or not, I'd just like to have that discussion once we see the pricing, and we can make some decisions at, at that time.
Right. But when we made that, we made that vote the last time. We had no idea. We, you know, 10, 10 cents was 10 cents. We didn't know it's going to be 34 cents, you know, afterwards. So it's always a big uncomfortable risk when you take it. That time, we, you know, exceeded. I was going to say that, but we exceeded the expectations. But, you know, in all fairness, people have to realize you're not going to be able to do that every single time. We love to do that every single time, but it's, it's gambling. You know, you're, you're taking a chance at it. And, you know, if you lock in at three years, you can get a better rate, but you can't get out, right? So if, if it fluctuates down.
The, the town can get out. Individual countries do have the right to get in and out of the program as they wish.
Okay.
But, but anyone could get out of the program from that into the program. That, that's not the issue. It's just, you know, many people aren't paying attention. Most of the people in Easton probably don't realize that the energy prices were, were as high as they were.
Right.
We have seen tremendous often, your, your program is a well-participated. It is still, uh, about 60, 67 hundred years in the program. So it, it really, from, from, even from the get-go, it, it's well, it, there's been a lot of opt-ins, a lot of participation right now.
Yeah. And you support other towns in these areas, in this region, right?
About 82 across Massachusetts.
So that's pretty good.
Yes.
And it does have a renewables component in it, you said?
That, that's correct. He, he, the administrator includes two. One was a standard. A basic service product, it's a meat RPS, which is, at this point, I just want you to know, about 59% renewable right now. When this contract comes up, it would be 61. I believe it goes up 2% here. And then he also had 100% national wind product. That was 100% renewable. That people could opt, opt into.
So that's, that's great. I'd like to, you know, have more people understand that and know it and choose that because it's, it's just a tiny fraction more. But it does really help us meet our, you know, our climate goals.
Agreed.
People care about that, but you don't really notice that it does jump out at you necessarily. Sorry.
Correct. I think, we've seen that they're not as, uh, I, I'd like to see more of it, but it's difficult to get people to change. So especially when it comes to electricity.
Yeah. Okay. Questions from the board?
What is the timing of when we decide if it's two or three years?
So I, I think right now, like Mark said, we're just looking at getting the town's low data to the supply community and then maybe getting some indicative pricing. Information will only know and then maybe getting some indicative pricing, information will only, no action required.
Okay.
So we're thinking April thirteenth, um, we can set up a meeting later in the afternoon, Connor, walk through the prices um, or the next day or whenever. And then that would give us some, we can see pricing specifically for the town's load, we have a rough idea, like Mark said. Um, the other good thing is the suppliers have their stack loaded, so we can snap pricing at any time. So we'd just like to get out there right around April thirteenth, see what we have and then we can see all the different terms, all the way from six to thirty-six and kind of start making some decisions based on what we're looking at. And then we can decide on executables based on where the market is in April. And you know, if we wanna wait or we wanna go sooner, that sort of thing.
Right.
So, thank you. Yeah.
No questions, thank you, look forward to April thirteenth. You gotta rest, Mike, for a shot.
Well, this is an easy one tonight, so this.
Yeah. So that that must be the best job to have, to come and tell people how much money you saved them, right? Not everybody has the best time in that seat when they come to see how much money you saved them.
I would agree, and there is, there are times that I have to sit down and what people's rates haven't been as fortunate as yours. So it tonight is an easy uh, it's an easy conversation.
Well, I wanna thank you for being here and I also wanna thank you when you originally came, you you did a really great job. I'm not sure if everybody was on the board at this time, Jennifer, if you were on then.
No, I was not yet.
But um, you did a great job guiding the board and also um, you know, getting information out to the public to help them be aware of this. So uh, it's been a really great relationship.
Same on this side, just want you to know that, it's been excellent work, the administrator.
So Connor, do we, I don't see any special motion in here, is this something that we can, we vote to appoint you to make the decision when it comes in, or does it come back to the board again?
So I would figure you'd be coming back to the board, I, you had said April thirteenth was, do you think you'll have indicative pricing before thirteenth?
We'll have it on the thirteenth.
On the thirteenth.
Maybe around eleven, at eleven A M, maybe you'll have some like guardrails, then at that point, you can guide that, you know, between this and this.
Okay.
Rate between this and this, this term, I think is what we did last time.
So uh, perhaps we could connect after the meeting and just get kind of a a brief summary of what your other clients have seen as far as those guardrails that may have gone out to market in the past uh, month or so. And I could have a board vote to authorize within a certain uh, range, have a meeting on April tenth. And if something comes out of the thirteenth, that looks good, we could just do it. And if it's above that, uh, let's still watch, let me bring it back to your full meeting on the twenty-fourth, does that work?
Okay, great.
That makes sense.
I hope so. There's no vote on this one. Oh, well, thank you for being here, we'll be going, uh, good to see you all.
Good to see you.
All right, next we have a discussion of vote on Paul Rogan Company change order O two R O, Blanche Ames Elementary School.
Hello, everybody. My name is Chris Urbano, I am an assistant project manager for PMA Consultants, the owner's rep for this school project. So we have a couple items, so I'll jump right into it. This is change order number two for Paul Rogan Company. To note about this P C O, it started at about two hundred thousand and we negotiated down to about the number, which is fifty-six thousand, five hundred forty-three and two cents. So I have the P C Os in front of me, I'll run down on this checklist here. So P J R number seven, electrical work for installings and blowers. This was work that we had not bought out in scope and we planned on having either the town do it or the electrical sub for the school project do it. But we decided the best thing to do was to have the electrician on site for the wastewater treatment plant do it. Which that price came out at about eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents. The next two are P J R O nine A and P J R O nine B. These are both pumping costs, so we bought out eighty thousand gallons for pumping with the wastewater treatment. And this A is for everything that was additional past that eighty thousand gallons. Which that price came out at about ten thousand, thirty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. For B, this is the pumping cost that happened after they finished the project and it was in beneficial use for the town. But the D E P wanted to see it pass test prior to allowing it to serve um, serve the town. So this is the price for all the pumping additional until they got the D E P approval, which is twenty-two thousand, three hundred and nine and forty-two cents. P J R eleven, this is for added bends and valves at the filter tank inlet. These were not bought out in scope, but the engineer would um, wanted to see these in the tanks. So this was a three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollar add. The P J R change order number twelve is for a vacuum test at the new F A E T tank, number two. Now, this wasn't required, but the engineer decided it was a good idea to have this test just to make sure everything's working functionally in the right space. This is for two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. The next change order is for welding repairs to the existing filter tank. Now, this was unforeseen because no one could get down to the filter tank to see what the conditions of it were. So this is when the, when Rogan got down there and saw the conditions of the tank, they realized that it had been had beaten up over the years. So they needed to weld certain areas and make sure the tank was safe and could hold all the capacity that was needed. This price came up to twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-six and forty-seven cents. The next change order is P J R fourteen, this is for cr the credit for deletion of two drywalls. These were not needed, were not required, so then we got a credit back from the contractor. The next change order is P J R fifteen, credit to delete crack ceiling at existing tank. So this is also a credit for crack ceiling at the existing tank, which was decided by the engineer was not needed. So we decided to get a credit for it for the town. This was for twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven and seventy-six cents. The last change order on here is P G R, P J R eighteen, that is for additional inspection services with related photo and video documentation of the existing F E T tank. So once again, this was recommended by the engineer, which we felt was necessary for the price, which was nine hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Okay.
So that comes out to fifty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-three and two cents.
So at the, at, as of March twenty-seventh in the packet, it notes that um, ninety-five point nine percent of the contract time has elapsed. Forty-nine point one percent of the owner contingency has been expended. And five point three percent of the owner contingency is held in reserve for no risks pending resolution. So um, we're still.
Correct, it was very good shape.
Excellent. Any questions from the board?
Please trade moving.
All right, perfect. Uh, can I get a motion to accept uh, change order zero two R O for Blanche Ames Elementary School?
So move barging, second land.
Barger and land, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. All right, and the next one is uh, discussion and vote contracts for furniture fixtures and equipment from Information Technology. Um, otherwise known as F F and E slash I T for Blanche Ames Elementary School um, from P M A.
Sorry, Dottie, we skipped one, there's three here, yes, so uh, we have a, item six is another change order bundle number twelve. So we did five, which was for Rogan.
Oh, I, you're right, I'm sorry, I don't know that. Um, item, so we'll go back to item six, uh, discussion and vote in Blanche Ames Elementary School grade builders, project change order number twelve.
So as noted in the memo, this is for conditional approval only. And this price came out at about hundred and one thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. As noted by Dottie, we are at forty-nine point one percent domain contingency, so still very good shape. So I will run down the change orders that are inside of this. The first one is number one fifty-six, which is for taping framing at water bubblers, D one O one D and D two O one E. This was at these two locations, the bubbler did not fit in with the masonry, so it needed to be reframed. And that's the cost of this reframing, which was tracked on T N M by P M A and it came out to one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents. The next change order is a hundred eighty-nine, which is R F P fifty-five to provide plastic dome grates. The town requested this to get an excess of the dome crates that go on the roof drains on top of the roof, because they are plastic and they do break easily. So they just wanna have backups, which came out to about one thousand eighty, one thousand eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. The next change order is a hundred and ninety, which is for the patching and painting walls for paper tile dispensers. So the paper tile dispensers were installed by a subcontractor in the wrong locations. Well, they were put in the right location where they were told, but those locations turned out to be not handicap accessible. So it need, they needed to be taken off the wall and then they patched and painted every spot where they were installed previously and had to be restored. Reinstall. And that came, but this was also tracked on T N M by us on a daily basis and verified daily. So this came out to nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven and fifty-nine cents. The next P C O is a hundred ninety-one, which is patching and painting walls for wall mounted projectors. This is actually a credit to the town that was transferred over to the F F and E budget, which this was for the subcontractor who was installing the projectors in all the classrooms, had installed them in the wrong location, which was on them. So we had, we had to have them relocated, which this price, this credit comes back to us, which, because it was patched and painted after. So I would say, every time where the projectors moved, it was patched and painted. So the subcontractor for the F F and E was giving us that credit back of ele- eleven thousand dollars.
So it's a wash.
Yeah, it's a wash, so that ends up washing with the cafe two projector, which I'll talk about later.
Thank you.
And then one ninety-two is the roof door at stair one waterproofing seal. Early on in the project, when the school was um, occupied, we could, there was a lot of wind-driven water that was coming in as a roof access door. So this was to install a seal just to close up all that areas and avoid any water damage into the school, which ended up being five hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. The next change order is a hundred ninety-four, stainless steel roof wall flashing and ceiling at roof locations. This is kind of like a belts and suspenders item that was agreed upon by a T R C architect and owner, that it was a needed item and it makes everything more secure up on the roof. This was tracked on T N M, makes everything waterproof, everything ready to go and kind of just that little extra um, that the school needed. Which turned out to be forty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-two cents, which was tracked on all T N M and tickets were verified at that, on that day. The next item is a hundred ninety-five, which is a floor pattern adjustments. So on the design, each classroom has a security feature where there's a floor design where the kids can stand and they'll be out of view um, when you look into the door. And I believe it was four or five of the classrooms were designed wrong. So the, you could see the pattern through the door, so this was the change to redo the floor and make it sit more secure so the kids have a spot where they know where they can stand and they know they can't be seen from the door. So that was just to fix that, it was just a simple design issue there. The next is two hundred, which is a credit for the roof ladder cage. The team felt this wasn't needed, so we ended up getting the fifth, one thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollar credit back for the cage that was supposed to go around the roof, roof ladder. P C O number two O one is a cafe two projector, power and pathway. This is for the electrical contractor to run conduit from the backside of the cafeteria to the stage so that they could um, install a new projector right below the uh, ramp in the building. So this is for them to run all the electrical needs, for them to plug and play on this, which this came out to nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-three cents. P C O number two hundred and two is for the condensate drain line in A one O four. This was missing a condensate receiver, which the um, plumber found when he was installing and brought it up as an R F I to the design team and design team told them to proceed on T N M, which we tracked, to install this uh, condensate receiver. Which that ended up being two thousand, fourteen dollars and sixty-six cents. The last change order is two hundred and three, which is R F P sixty-one rain chain grates. The rain chain grates, we realized as the kids were in the building and they were large and they were able to like, put their, get their foot stuck in that, so we felt like it was a safety item to install new ones that are smaller and so that no kids can get their foot stuck and everyone's safe outside when they're running around. And that ended up being four thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. So that is all the items in change order twelve.
Question, Alex? Can you just describe again the floor, the floor pattern?
Yes, so each room had, which I had a picture up for you, but each room has a floor pattern that is diagonal from the line of sight from the door. So ev- everyone has a spot in any sort of scenario if something were to happen where they know they can go, all the kids can go and stay within that pattern on the floor and they cannot be seen from the door from an outside view.
Okay.
And four of the classrooms had a wrong design, so then they could be seen from that. So this was the design change.
Thank you.
To make sure they're safe.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chris, can you just remind us, um, so we're at forty-nine percent of contingency and this is approved?
Yeah.
What was the, what are those contingency buckets and where do some good savings stand at? I always feel like that's important in the event that somebody has not watched the other eleven of these change order bundles. You know, we kind of take through a hundred thousand dollars, make the whole government collectively near ten million in the black, right?
Mm-hmm. So yes, exactly, so there, yeah, this, we did save ten million dollars on the bid of this project, which we are, still have that majority of that in savings. And then we also, yeah, so we're at forty-nine point one percent, only five point three right now is at risk. So we are more than ahead of schedule and are gonna have plenty of money at the end of this. Cause without, even with the five point three percent unforeseen, you can't see coming close to that number of the contingency. So we're in a very good spot, especially with the good savings of ten million.
Sometimes it feels like a lot coming out of something, but at the end of any kind of a job, these things do pop and so uh,
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
We're anxious for it to wrap up, although we love seeing you guys here on your house, so.
It's my first time, so I do believe you.
And then Dottie, I would just ask, there's an italicized uh, motion in the packet here, because uh, also as you get here to the end of these projects, sometimes we can't always agree on everything expeditiously uh, between all the various teams, we're working on it. And so I, there's some outstanding items, so um, I would ask the board to vote to approve this change order contingent upon resolution of outstanding construction change directives uh, when they're reached um, satisfactory resolution in the opinion of the O P M and myself.
Excellent. You got that, Craig?
So you want me to repeat this, okay. Uh, I would ask the board to vote to approve change order number twelve, contingent upon resolution of outstanding C C D in the opinion of the O P M and the town administrator.
That's your motion?
It's my motion.
Second land.
So that's barging and land, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. All right, so now we're at the uh, F F and E. So this is uh, item seven, discussion and vote contracts for furniture fixtures, equipment and I T for Blanche Ames Elementary School.
So there's two items on here, the first one is from ScholarCraft, which is a student chair swap. So the kids got, there was a specific height of chairs for pre-k, kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And when the chairs were brought and the teacher started using them, it was realized that the chairs that were ordered for pre-k were too small as well as for first and second grade, which they were supposed to be for that grade, for that age range. But it just turned out it didn't work for the kids and it didn't work for the teachers. So this was for a chair swap with the manufacturer, which we were able to negotiate with them and they were able to take back some of the chairs that were already there and then we were just swapped back directly with them with bringing more, I think it was sixteen inch chairs instead of the fourteen inch chairs in order to satisfy the building and the needs of the kids. So that ended up being eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents, after all the credits were taken out and the back and forth with them. And then the next one is for the cafe two projector, which I mentioned earlier. So this is for the relocation of the cafe two projector, because originally it was supposed to go in the top of the ceiling at the cafeteria. But logistically, it wasn't gonna work, because the beams that were there and it was gonna have to be probably like a fifteen foot, twenty foot extension down in a heavy, very heavy uh, projector, and it's like two hundred pounds, like very big projector, which was, safety-wise, it wasn't gonna work.
And just focus on the building ceiling and there's how high.
Yes. It's like thirty-two feet. Yeah, so it, really logistically, it wasn't gonna work. So the design team came up with the idea to put it under the ramp, which is why that electrical work and conduit work was needed to get from the bu- back of the ramp to the stage. And that, so that price came out to be twenty tha- twenty thousand, excuse, six hundred and twenty-nine. But the credit for the patching is taken away from that, which was eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. And then also the credit for the original subcontractor who didn't install the cafe two projector and the digital display units. So we got a credit back from them, because they didn't end up, we went with a different company who is now installing it. So then those credits ended up washing out that twenty thousand. So it was an eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollar credit and eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollar credit, which washed out the first twenty thousand for that new cafe projector.
Excellent.
Which when you sit right now uncommitted for F F and E, two thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, which, and we have, anticipate no more changes, no more adds with that. So we're sitting in a good spot with F F and E.
Excellent. Any comments, questions?
Very thorough.
All right, so um, Craig, would you like to make a motion to um, to a vote contracts for F F and E to uh, for A U S C zero one for ScholarCraft and E E S C C S O two for C C S pack?
So move barging, second land.
Barger and land, all in favor? Excellent. Great, thank you.
This is your time, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, uh, number eight, which is a discussion and vote on D P W twenty twenty-three dot seventeen, this sign design or the wayfinding sign?
Sure, thank you, I am an advocate for Public Works here, uh, Assistant Town Administrator, Billy John, and Public Works are having Citizens Academy at D P W tonight, which might be marginally more exciting than a contract review, uh, so I will uh, do my best here. Uh, so wayfinding signage, this is a a fun contract to get to a board. As the board will recall, as part of our ongoing efforts to improve our infrastructure, we received a massive uh, works grant back twenty seventeen for downtown street skate work. That included uh, repainting of the roadways. That included uh repainting of the roadway, sidewalk and pedestrian safety improvements along Main Street. Uh that dovetailed with DPW's work on Pond Street. Uh out of remaining funds in this grant, a final phase of it would be to install uniform wayfinding signage in not only Northeastern, but throughout the entire town. Um bids were open in January. Uh the response of bidder is uh Louisville's for Regent. It's sign design out of Brockton. The bid is for two hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-nine. It includes a fabrication and installation of approximately forty-five different signs throughout Easton. As shown on plans and specs that are in the packet. Uh these plans uh came together with significant amount of uh community participation. The board established a wayfinding uh group that included representation from uh the staff side of Public Works and planning of this office, but also from the Commission on Disabilities, Economic Development Council, Shell Town Cultural District, Human Rights Committee and others um to make sure we had a a a broad and inclusive lens on the type of signage we want to be welcoming and directing folks around town. Uh so again, the contract award itself is just shy of two hundred eighty thousand. The remaining grant is three hundred forty thousand. I recommend approval of the project and the uh contract.
Any comments or questions?
I've served on this one and it was um very thorough and um everyone on it gave really great feedback, which I think guys were really good um on as well. And I think it's gonna be really um pleasing for the town. It's one of those things where you learn a lot through the process. You go in realizing that you think um things should look a certain way or you wanna capture the vision that you need a certain way and nuances pop up and you realize, oh, that doesn't look like what you think it looks like on the side when you're driving. Or this reflects a certain way that certain folks can't see in certain, you know, like additions. So um it was really just a joy to participate in this one and thank you.
Alright.
Yeah, the much of the same thing. Um just to for you know way of background for people who uh might not fully grasp what wayfinding is, to put it in perspective, I believe you guys all do, but maybe some people at home. Um you know, if you're, you see it a lot of, I see it a lot of coastal communities. You enter into a community and that community has an identity and a personality in as far as it's signage. It it ties everything together. So no matter where you are in that town, if you see a sign that looks a certain way, you know you're in that town. And they're really uh they're really sharp looking, they're classy. Um it's it it gives the town um it's it's really, it it's exciting that the town will have this identity because what has been chosen is going to be the identity of the town for decades to come. So as we add to this down the line or add signage here or there or place signage here or there or increase signage or whatever, this is the new identity of Easton. Uh you know, for years, our identity growing up here was always wrapped in black and orange, right? It was the high school colors. Well, that's the high school colors. It's not the town's identity though, right? So what this does is it brings it brings that to Easton. Um and it's, I can't wait to see these signs go up. I think people are gonna be blown away when they see it all over town and I think I think people are gonna be really happy. This is a great use of that money.
It adds a nice kind of curb appeal.
Right.
Yeah.
And and have a uniformity uh and you know, there's some like, I think there's a lot of signs like you're just kind of tired, you know, the law.
Yeah.
So it'll be nice to.
Disjointed signs, like you know, that sign doesn't match that sign. It's this is awesome.
I really thought you fought over the colors too because that was a big discussion.
Yeah. We poured over it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then there was disagreements, agreements, uh and it was it was a very healthy discussion.
I think it was very sleek choice.
Yeah, exactly. It's a great merger.
Well, I'm I'm impressed with what it was done and looking at the pictures, it was it was it was really kind of neat to watch.
Yeah.
To see them. Um so kudos to you guys for doing that.
I just, there's this really, really qualified board, so very fun and.
Well, I think it's almost turned into a best practices that one of the things now that it's more commonplace that we get representatives from all the boards and committees. And I serve on the Commission on Disabilities and it you know, often they're overlooked for a number of different things because they're not one of the main committees that people recognize all the time. And you know, looking at the signs from uh an accessibility lens and you know, the font that's used because people with dyslexia or the color combinations that are used, we really spent a lot of time talking about that as well. So the transformation of what you had at the beginning to how it transpired and turned out at the end, you can tell that there was a lot of thought, a lot of expertise and a lot of perspectives in there because we don't want any group to feel left out. This is really important for economic development, Mark.
Mm-hmm.
Um it's important to um our downtown and the cultural district, to some people when they get to the downtown, they know you've arrived. The placemaking aspect of that. And then um like you said, to to tie it together with a brand identity. So um I know the Commission on Disabilities were, the members were very happy and very eager to participate.
Jason was fantastic. He came with like very, very detailed thoughts every meeting and that was where the deepest learning for me came from was.
Yeah.
Yes. Right.
He advocated hard for that.
He did and it was it was, it shows.
And now when you go other places, you're not gonna be able to unsee that. You'll you'll know that like, oh, wait a second, thank God.
Yeah.
Yes. Very excited to see this coming forward.
Well, I'm glad we had the opportunity for this and thank you, you know, to the state and our legislators for supporting the Mass Works grants. We've been uh very fortunate to have great grant writers in town that uh that are able to to get those awards. And this really, we did get a lot a lot of bang for all with this one, so. Alright, so um so and also I just wanna say for sign design, I looked them up because I was curious which place they were and they are a fully employee owned company and I thought that that was really noteworthy and very beneficial. Cool. So I followed them to ask them about it and uh had a nice conversation with the owner and it was really, it makes me feel good that we're doing business with a company like that, so. Uh just just a little shout out to them. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to uh award that contract, DPW twenty twenty-three dash fourteen to Sign Design.
So move Podra, second, Lynn.
Podra and Lynn, all in favor? You know this. Great. Uh item nine, vote DPW twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five with Liberty Chevrolet for our twenty twenty-four Chevy twenty-five hundred H D Silverado with snowplow.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. In your packet, there's a memo from Director Field that gives a little bit more detail to it, but uh this is a new uh Silverado with uh snowplow and associated accessories for Public Works. It was part of the approved capital budget for the fiscal year. Capital appropriation was sixty thousand. Price of this is closer to seventy-five, but there's uh existing funding in the DPW Equipment Revolving Fund that collectively can uh fund the purchase, so we recommend award the contract.
Excellent. Oh, we didn't really need too much. No removal list. Yeah, not going wide, but we're not a little bit.
If there is a removalist in your payroll, it is. It's on you.
Any comments or questions on this one? Alright, Craig, you want to make a motion?
So I move to approve the DPW twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five contract to Liberty Chevrolet for a two thousand twenty-four Chevrolet twenty-five hundred H D Silverado with snowplow, seventy-four thousand four hundred four dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second, Lynn.
So that's Podra and Lynn, all in favor? You know this.
My um my kids and I packed up all of the snowplow yesterday and they told me that if it snows, it's my fault, so.
Let me turn to you on the phone. You see the hook for paying for it, like Dottie.
Alright, so next we have a discussion and vote for contract EPD twenty twenty-three dash O three for the Motorola Body worn cameras and associated software and data services.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Kevi.
Just had me thinking of my corduroy black and orange offerings jacket that my mother's.
I you don't wear that.
I had one of those too.
Everyone.
They uh they were not attractive.
Uh good evening, everybody. Um you've all seen the memo on the contract, so um just for a little bit of background. Uh in twenty twenty-one, we applied for and received a uh grant from the state for body worn cameras. And at the time, it had some restrictions on it, um collective bargaining restrictions and uh how the funds could be spent on storage. So we entered into some pretty major discussions about whether we're gonna house it on site, which is extremely expensive, or try to do cloud storage. Um at the same time, the district attorney's office came up with a uh federal grant that they were applying for that they would make available for any towns in Russell County that signed onto it, which I did. Um and so it all came to light, so what we have now is a a grant from the district attorney's office that all dispersed funds that we can use towards cloud storage. So it solved all of our data needs in-house. Um and then we can use the remaining funds that we got from the state. We ended up reapplying for the state grant and got it. So we actually ended up getting more money, about fifty-four thousand, so it's about seven thousand more than the original grant we did. So we're in a good spot. We selected Motorola. They'll handle all of um our storage needs, redaction software and anything we need. Um we feel comfortable moving forward Motorola. We they're a vendor we use now for our radios. Uh Yarmouth Police and Swansea Police are using Motorola, so we haven't heard anything but good things about them. So we're looking to order them uh by the end of this week and hopefully it could be anywhere from six to eight weeks, the delivery time. And once we get them here, we'll start training and we'll have them on the road as soon as possible. Every officer will uh be assigned a camera and uh we're looking forward to it.
Just add add a little bit more to this. So the total kind of five year cost here for three year contracts, a hundred thirty-four thousand, but eighty-five thousand would change about as through the grants and the chief reference stop between the district attorney's office and state grant funding. Uh and so the ongoing um year over year operating cost for the police budget will be approximately sixteen thousand. But um that for the level of security we've been getting, cause that was really one of the major concerns. Um you know, as we continue to modernize our network and try to uh harden our uh uh cybersecurity assets, having having this tool would be uh uh great for investigations, for transparency, things of that nature. But storing terabytes of video uh locally was not something we were excited about doing for a host of reasons, including just having the storage and retaining it. Um so this contract kind of includes both as a capital acquisition as well as a video as a service, uh CGS certified. And something that's important here is that we, as these grants were coming together, we were working through the normal collective bargaining cycle and this is part of the same round of bargaining police minions that um we already have the policy adopted.
Yep, we are all, yep, we've.
Um so there's not any labor issue there. Uh and this was part of the same package that also um included agreement to leave civil service. So we feel pretty good about it.
We do.
Excellent.
Good job.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, it's a point of curiosity. How long does this data need to be stored for?
So it depends who you ask. So um the um secretary of uh records hasn't really decided what the retention program's going to be. So um the way it works with the cloud storage is they're going to have it indefinitely.
Yeah.
So we're gonna hold on to it or the cloud is gonna hold on to it. Um we haven't, we've asked Laden's office, no one has really made a decision yet on how long you're supposed to hold on to these records for. So uh Motorola knows that and um so they're gonna hold on to the data for us.
That would get expensive.
It'd be very expensive. It's gonna be like Google Photos where you're like, everyone can have unlimited. Just kidding. Hey.
Yes.
Well, see, yeah, and and that's what was driving our discussion last time with um if we're gonna house it here, we'd be we'd be.
Especially with the absence of a record retention schedule.
Right, we'd be having required to hold everything and we'd be like submitting capital requests for terabyte for storage arrays every every year.
Yeah. Even for somebody to actually go through and figure out how to.
We'd be. It'd be a a whole other job to man- to manage the storage, yeah. And so.
Yeah.
And how to.
Right.
So that's something that I I'm sure the state is aware of if, because certain entities in the state are funding these acquisitions. I don't think, there's a few departments in the area that are kind of working towards this, but we might be one of the first. Certainly not the first, but in Massachusetts, we'll be one of one of the earlier adopters at at least to fully implement uh product because we we've dealt with the bargaining part.
Absolutely.
Um but eventually this is going to become, we think, much more normalized and these companies are just simply not going to be able to maintain unlimited terabytes of H D video for everyone. And and so we'll need to work with the secretary's office on, just like there are with any other records, um schedules for retention.
Yeah, I think the way it looks tomorrow, it's gonna look much different to you from now as you know, a lot of towns right now around us are, they're in the window we were in a year ago. They've got the grant funding, but they haven't done their collective bargaining agreements get away. So um we're gonna be one of the first in the area that have them implemented and and on, so so we're excited.
Just talk a little bit about what does that actually look like? So if you could pull over for a minor, you know, registration sticker lapse.
So it's. Yeah, so it's it's.
Cameras on.
You know, any citizen contact, it's policy driven um to activate them, you know, during citizen contacts or times of emergencies. There are things with medical emergencies that are not supposed to be turned on. It it's all driven by the policy. We're we're accredited, as you know, we got our award last uh two months ago. Um and so we we really follow how the accreditation standards tell us best practice to to operate it. So um we're not gonna be walking around here with them on. There are certain things that you don't turn them on when you walk through government buildings and things like that.
So the officer turns it on himself.
Yeah, it manually gets activated, yeah.
And did they have to announce that the camera is on or is there a light or is there some way that?
So per best practice, you're supposed to tell um if obviously if you don't have the the means to do it right away, it's you know, it's you.
Right. Emergency situations, security, it's like, oh, glad I'm ready.
It's something, yeah, yeah. So it's preferred to let you know by the way we're performing, yeah. And that's all driven by policy as well.
And these cameras have the ability uh that if there is an emergency, if you don't turn on right away, there's a certain amount that it can reconstruct backwards from when it's turned on.
Yeah, so when you when you activate them, it picks up. I you know, I don't have the training yet, so I don't know all the parameters, how you configure them. But um the standard I'm seeing now with Swansea is we turn them on, it's capturing the prior ten seconds. So you turn it on and it's it's grabbing the the prior ten seconds of recording. And that's common with our our booking error and our cell block. It's the same thing. Once we activate our cameras, it's grabbing the prior ten seconds. It's just the way the audio works. So yeah, so still some configuration to work on.
Yeah, sure, there'll be some trial and error, you know, learning.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I I I think this is fantastic. You feel from where it began, writing the grants, uh working with the department and working into the negotiations and getting the police department on board uh to be, you know, one of the first in the state. I think it was, it's a no brainer to go cloud storage. Um I I until this moment, I didn't even know that locally it was being was being, you know, considered.
Yeah.
Just locally it's being phased out.
Correct.
It's it's not the future of anything. Um storing it in the.
It's not a liability to have it on site.
Yeah, uh.
If you have a, you know, fire or sprinklers, you know, it's you're on the.
Yeah.
Right, you need you need, you actually need twice the amount of storage than a lot of what you really need right over here.
Right.
Yeah.
So so it's it's it would have been brutal, I think.
You mean you almost have to construct a facility just to store it, but then uh the cost to me, heat it, heat it, cool.
Yeah, like the cost, yeah.
Yeah, no, those backups are, uh there's, when I was in technology, I used to sell backup storage and tape and uh hard drive storage. There's so many ways it can fail.
Mm-hmm.
And unless you're testing that all the time, it generally happens when you need to go pull something off the tape, it's not there.
Yeah.
So cloud is definitely the way to go.
We're doing it right the first time around, so I keep my cap to you and I thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the support. You know, it was a lot of work going into this, not just by me, but prior Chief Sullivan, that's something he and I started. Um now Deputy Chief Adams really did all the the grant writing for me. Um so it really hats off to him for getting it done.
In the unions, you know, for everybody to to be on board with this and and bring it forward, uh you know, that's a big step.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is a big change, any kind of change in somebody's work environment.
Yeah.
So um I think that it's great that they are they're forward thinking like that.
Yeah.
And uh your leadership certainly helped that. I just also wanna comment on the relationship that you have with the Bristol County District Attorney's Office. You know, after we had them in a couple of months ago to learn a little bit more about what that office did, it was really interesting. And you know, it makes me more aware of the interactions that you have and that relationship is really, really important. You know, in many different ways. I usually help with drug takeback, you know, and so I know.
Yeah. It's coming out April, April twenty-second.
It is, you're right, April twenty-second. Um but you know, sometimes when we're talking in that kind of a context and well, you know, that's the only way I related to how those offices communicated, but there's so much more, so.
Yeah.
Getting Big Red with their their support and assistance is really great. And then also you mentioned it, but I just wanna call it out again to congratulate you on the accreditation. How many years is this now?
Uh well, uh we got our first award in two thousand and ten, so we're thirteen years into it, our fifth award, yeah.
So another cutting edge, uh you know, it's a lot of work and it the public should be very assured
Yeah.
that the steps that you have to go through to get that accreditation, you know, they look at everything, evidence, lockers and things that you hear about on the news that are sometimes not, you know, uh run as efficiently in in some places.
Right.
It makes me feel better knowing that you guys passed the test on.
Yeah, thank you. I thank the support because it is challenging. It's uh there's a lot of work that goes into it.
Alright, so uh we need to make a vote on this contract, Craig?
So that we move to appropriate a hundred thirty-four thousand forty-five dollars, the cost of the cameras.
Second, Lynn.
Podra and Lynn, all in favor? You know this. Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good seeing you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Good luck finding that coat.
I'm gonna be mandatory to have meeting attire. Alright, well, that's one.
That would be fun. Alright, so here we are at the annual town meeting, we're at draft. Um let's just start uh in order for Article Two to amend the revolving plan with client law to establish revolving plan and establish spending for revolving plans.
Sure, thank Dottie. This is a standard article every spring under uh general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three and a half. We have to set the uh uh the. uh the uh amounts that cannot be exceeded uh each year, I believe Wendy, are there any changes to these?
No.
From prior, so this is the same uh amounts that we have carried in prior years for these revolving funds. So for his comfortable, I given it is unchanged, I would recommend a vote to include and recommend.
And so I move to include and recommend Article Two.
Second, Lynn.
Roger Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Article twelve, reserve additional facility year twenty twenty three, community preservation funds.
So Tom is going to settle in for the rest of the audience, uh they're all C P A funding really, just then they're next.
Perfect height, Tom Musar, chair of the C P C, twenty dollar link. Happy to be here and see everybody again, especially in person. Um so I'll try not to talk as long as you all know I'm very well capable of, but we've got some great articles for you guys. The C P C really honestly is an organization that I have an honor to be able to be a part of. Um let me start by sending a bandito all the team at the C P C, uh certainly all the applicants as well. This year there was some incredible applications that were well thought out. Um and certainly thank you to the people that support us, including Wendy, uh Stephanie Anderson, um Wayne does just a great job and so many people at the town. Honestly, we get a ton of support. It leads to a really robust application process and I think it serves the residents of our town incredibly well. Um for those that don't know, the Community Preservation Act was voted by the state in two thousand. Um at that time, it was designated to support open space recreation, affordable housing and historic preservation. Certainly those things resonate with the town of Easton and our residents. They do now and they did then. Very quickly, in two thousand and one, the town of Easton residents voted to adopt the C P A at a three percent levy. And so far to date, according to the most recent stats on our website, we've raised just shy of thirty three million dollars, nineteen point eight million from our own residents, nine point seven million from the state, which is just shy of the fifty percent match and that's part of the benefit for communities to do it in Detroit. And we've actually also raised three million dollars plus in interest and other investment income. So uh as a result of that thirty three million dollars in funds raised, we've been able to support twenty four point six million of projects in our town. I'm sure many of you know a lot of the big ones, just some fresh ones from last year. Certainly supported affordable housing, the Pond Street, the Island, community preservation over by the Governor Ames Estate, the Pickleball Court, I'm sure you've all seen those, those have been robustly received. Um and certainly there were historic preservation with fence items, the exterior of the town hall, we supported again last year and the old theme's Mora Hall is a great example of supporting uh what I think is a gem of Easton in terms of the emergency repairs and construction docs and costs. And that was last year, those are all great things that we've worked on this year. And I'm here to talk about all the new applications that we have in front of you today. Um so by way of budget, um just as a, I guess, a general anchoring point, we have about two point two million dollars of revenues expected this coming year. Um we expect to spend this year over that about six point seven million, so you'll see the projects that we talk about today, we definitely think it's worth it, it's valuable. And thankfully, the C P C, giving credit to the people before me, did a great job of building up their reserves. Um so we have a very healthy balance sheet, um we have a very uh large borrowing capacity if we so needed it. And even using some of our um unreserved funds, we still have a very healthy balance left. Um we had about six point four million going into this year, we're gonna use about two point six million or forty percent of it. And we're using it exactly how it's designed in times of high interest. It helps us accommodate some very worthwhile projects that we believe will benefit the residents of the town and limit the amount of borrowing we do at an elevated interest rate. So we still have um enough funds left over that candidly it would preserve our ability for any priority parcels that come up in town that the C P C is focused on, that we can still make sure we're inactive to spend in preserving some of those spaces, whether they might be farm areas, open space or other large projects that come our way. So again, I wish I could take credit for that financial stewardship, but that was a lot of great people on the team before me. So with that, I will just launch into the articles. Um Article twelve is a good one, it's an easy one. So I mentioned three key areas, open space, recreation, historic resources and community housing. So when we receive supplemental revenues, it's our responsibility to allocate ten percent of those receipts into those three buckets. And thankfully, the state has more than once this year given us excess funds. So not only did we get our initial allotment from the state, but twice they came back and said we have more funds available. So we're supporting the C P A, the state sees the value in doing so. And so for us, we received one hundred and forty eight thousand forty four dollars. You can see that fourteen eight oh four for those three buckets is ten percent. So it's us meeting our state mandated requirement to fund those. Does it make sense for me to go through this slate and then rather than stop and let you vote for each one, or how do you wanna do it?
I think we should probably vote them out, we don't, because otherwise I'm like the gaffer to do a lot of problems.
Yeah, yeah, just cause you're
Yeah.
And else we get dragged with it.
Yeah. Cool.
So so that would be for Article twelve, so um Craig, do you want to
Yeah, so I move to to uh include and recommend Article twelve.
Second, Lynn.
All in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. So Article thirteen.
Awesome. Article thirteen, I like to call this one a relatively easy one too. It's about the budget and the town report that we submit. Um this one has two key line items, the first one being the administrative expenses. That largely pays for a half salary of a town employee that helps support um what we do and other administrative expenses get added into it to support what we try to accomplish for the C P C. That's a hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then the next item is the debt service and that's six hundred and two thousand dollars for uh you folks keeping track in terms of our budget. We have about two point two million of budget. So this helps you appreciate that we allocate maybe just under twenty five percent of it, six hundred thousand, towards debt service. We're very thoughtful and conscious of when things roll off, for when we may also now go back to borrow. Um and if I have this wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, but today's day and age with our rates at five percent, every million you borrow over fifteen years is about a hundred thousand dollars of annual debt service. So that gives you a little context for our borrowing capacity. Um so there's six hundred and one thousand five hundred eighty five dollars of debt service, it's five primary projects. Um none of them over two hundred thousand dollars. It's Dean Street, um Chestnut Street, Keach Fields, Governor Ames State, um Gill Property and Town Hall.
And a couple is falling off within the next three to five year window, correct?
There's spot on.
And will be, they'll have maturity and be gone.
Exactly.
Three of them will be gone.
All right, Craig, do you want to do?
So I'm I move to include and recommend Article thirteen.
Second, Lynn.
Roger Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, Article fourteen.
Article fourteen, so the amount um probably brings true, so I told you our budget was two million two hundred twenty three thousand dollars. This happens to be a um article supporting funding for the affordable housing of two hundred and twenty three thousand five hundred dollars, which is ten percent. Um please note though that this isn't just a boilerplate, we just give ten percent and it's not necessarily attributable to projects. Uh credit to that entire committee led by Nikki Dustumian. Um and they'll be doing projects in twenty twenty four that include support for nonprofit developer for affordable housing on the Quanicate, on Morris Road. Um and they'll continue to support planning for work in the related administration to the town to meet its chapter forty B requirements. I think we all know in this room, but that's really important and has taken an incredible amount of long term planning for the town of Easton to thoughtfully manage its forty B requirements, which is ten percent of affordable housing. And we have just done, I believe, as a town, um an incredible job of managing that threshold so that we have thoughtful growth. We care and are compassionate about affordable housing. And I'm working closely with Nikki to understand if there are larger projects down the road the C P C should be aware about, so we can continue again to plan not just for this year, but for the future. So that we're thoughtful as if borrowing comes off, might there be a big project we need to support? And I think affordable housing is something that's critical to the diversity of Easton, so that's what this particular article is for.
Your second art song, Tom.
Great.
It's fine. Uh Craig?
So I move to uh include and recommend Article fourteen.
Second, Lynn.
So it's Roger Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous.
I'll be really quick, if I could jump in, something we do this year, uh because there's a lot of really cool projects.
Please do.
In those, we included a planning departments or the C P A more accurately, their actual grant applications are in the packet, so if you wanna dig into any of the the details, renderings, ensembles, that's all.
Yeah, and you know, I apologize, I actually have them up too in case you wanted to see them live, so if you have questions about any projects, pictures can be worth a thousand uh words, uh certainly as we get to some later later media article, meatier articles, uh that are a little bit heavier and more priced, I'm happy to show them. If you'll have access to them, then I I won't slow us down. Um but I appreciate that that stop. Article fifteen, so C P A funding for the Governor Ames uh estate recreational improvements, carriage house renovations. Um I think this represents what really long term partnerships can contribute to the town of Easton and our residents. Um the Board of Trustees or the trustees um of reservations uh at the Governor Ames Estate have been great partners. Um we've really done a great job collaborating with them on prior projects. Certainly on the Pond Street and the um Island property, we've had communications with them. They've been engaging, thoughtful. They brought forth uh an application request, I think as many of you know, they're looking to reinvigorate, that's probably a good word, the Governor Ames Estate. They're looking to tear down the home, put up a a multi-functional uh open space area. Um they're looking to also do upgrades to the carriage house, um circa eighteen sixty, uh bringing in um what I think is um the most important, accessible bathrooms, um but also mechanicals. Um and I think it's just again, a great partnership um that demonstrates a highly used gem of an asset for the residents of Easton. Um and it just helps us support, I think, the next level of opportunity that that property can hold. Um they were great partners, uh we always in the C P C like it when people come to us, not just with the ask, but also with a thoughtful plan and funds that they've been able to raise. Not every applicant can, but this overall spend for the project is estimated to be eight hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. They've asked for two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars of support of C P A funds. Um and we couldn't think of a better use of those funds to support a historic asset, but also um that area that's just got incredibly high use appropriately set.
Yeah, it's uh
Eight thirty five? It's eight hundred and thirty five thousand.
The article, we're contributing two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars to an eight hundred and thirty five thousand dollar project.
And they they're trying to seek other grants and other funding as well as their own fundraising. Um I was just gonna say that they are real um important for the cultural district and and the economic development plans for that whole downtown, so it's really great to see that kind of investment and the enthusiasm from them. Their new team uh is really approachable and you know, we've had a lot of uh correspondence with them from the cultural district as well.
Agreed. You know, just as a uh I'd be remiss if I didn't mention some improvements the C P C made to the process. So we actually have asked the applicant to follow us along the journey. So instead of receiving the application, having a meeting and voting on it, we actually get the application and we hold a pre-meeting on the draft application with the applicant and they join us for that. Then we hold a follow-up session with the applicant who we ask to be present as well. And what that creates is more of a dialogue rather than a, we've given you something and we're showing up to see what you think of it. And that partnership has enabled us to inform a lot of projects, to work collaboratively. Um and it actually smoothed out the process candidly that I think leads to a better outcome at the end. So it's a little bit maybe more work and steps, but it's a much better product at the end and a lot more alignment, that's for sure.
That's great. Well, we're talking about a lot of money, so you know, that's that kind of thoughtful consideration, even if it takes a little bit longer, it's really important. And it must help prioritize that's why.
Agreed.
All right.
So I move to include and recommend Article fifteen.
Second, Lynn.
Roger Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, Article sixteen.
Article sixteen, uh I yeah, and I think uh so this is the C P A funding for the Swift Park design, construction and bid documents. Um the amount might be small, it's thirty thousand dollars in this particular ask, but I think the project is large and I think it represents the ability for the town to have real uh intense long range planning. It's the development of an entire corridor. That corridor, if everybody goes back a few years, um includes things like putting in sewer, um putting in and rezoning for a more compact neighborhood, creating a walking opportunity environment to support the economic activity that goes up at the Target Plaza, to create a connection point to the um open space and recreation that exists at New and Old Pond and to bring that corridor all the way to Five Corners. So while this might seem like a very small construction bid document, Swift Park actually has an opportunity to play a role in that by creating a a stopping area for people on that walk to actually sit back, um have a little bit of a recreation space um and to do so in a safe way and really enhance the development, so it's not often I think that you improve residents' lives, touch open space, create economic activity and connect to major areas. Um so while this is a small C P A item, I guess, relative to other asks, I think it's part of a much larger project that deserves a lot of credit, so a lot of people play a role in that.
Yeah, I'm on that committee and and it's been a very thoughtful process of community members, members of the the town. And uh I I think it's a it's a terrific project in honoring um the first responders and folks who were involved with with C O V I D, except for terror, I think it's it's really important. And it honors the town too, so.
Awesome.
Well, we had the first charrette and we were talking about creating a gift in that area and the sewer and what is that gonna look like in ten, twenty, thirty years and uh one of the things that's important is you need to set these little places along the way because that's how people are guided. Everybody at that at that charrette, all the public said they want connectivity, they want bike lanes, they want sidewalks, but that's great, but if you have nothing to stop at along the way, you people aren't gonna use that method of mobility to get anywhere, so um this is a this is a perfect things making opportunity. And I'm sure that there'll be other little pocket parks or things like that along the way as it starts to develop, those places will reveal themselves, so I think this is a great spend of that money. Anybody else?
Agreed. So I I move to include and recommend Article sixteen.
Second, Lynn.
Roger Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Article seventeen.
Article seventeen, I think um is the Town Hall Historic Landscape Rehabilitation Plan. I think this dovetails perfectly with what the C P C is trying to accomplish and that's the continued support of key projects. Um and so what we're trying to ensure is that we always play an active role in the investments we may have made in the past. Obviously, the town hall had an exterior investment. Um and I think anytime that we can supplement a prior project with a new project that enhances the overall value, not just of the project in question, but the prior investment, I think that's a double benefit. Um and so obviously we believe in the town hall, it's historic heritage and nature and um there's been a lot of great people that have come through through these doors, both those that serve like yourselves and certainly residents that come through. Um and so this particular article would provide sixty thousand dollars in funding to create a plan for rehabilitating the grounds of Town Hall, which was built in nineteen twelve as the Wayside Estate. Um certainly improving drainage, uh more attractive contextual parking, lighting. Uh and the effort will involve the garden, creating a feasible and sustainable, so we always try to be thoughtful about the projects that we do and the incremental cost it could inadvertently add to the town. Um so you know, for example, as we build the park, somebody has to maintain it, and when we build a field, somebody has to cut the grass. And so we're very thoughtful about the projects that we have. So when we do work with applicants like this, we try to make sure that we seek, for example, if we can drought resistant plants, plants that are consistent with the historical nature of the building. Um and we've had some great dialogue, the team's been excellent to work with. Um they've heard us and they actually came to us with that, they appreciate the dynamic that's at play. So this would be uh sixty thousand dollars worth of historic landscape rehabilitation. As always, we love it when applicants come to us, ask for money and then raise their hand and say we found other money. Uh so credit to the town, um I don't know exactly who applied for it.
Wayne, yeah.
Wayne?
While 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 I, he deserves I think like double credit while staffing this grant body, writing grants for the state.
That's right.
So um was able, I think we just found out about that like a
We did.
few days ago, so.
So we'll
About half the cost will be funded by the state.
Exactly, so we have the fund sixty, but we'll get thirty back, it's a reimbursement grant, so again, credit to the team, what a great effort and his time was well spent.
And just thank you to C P A for, it's now that it's dark, I can can visualize it as well, but the exterior has come such a long way. One, you know, T P W is going to be doing a lot of work in the halls, so a lot of things are going away, uh we can tidy it up, which I'm very excited about. Uh and they'll be redoing septic, uh the entire septic tank as well. Parking lot sounds a lot closer than I remember it. Uh redoing the septic tank as well uh in advance of this landscaping work. You know, it's even since the exterior restoration, we've seen folks taking engagement photos on the lawn. Not something that would have been happening for quite some time and and because moving a project, it's gradual. Uh if you go, the C P A's website has all these grant applications online. If you go back a couple of years and see the the pretty, the prior conditions report for the town hall, it it's If you go back a couple years and see the the pretty the prior conditions report for the Town Hall, it it's 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 unrecognizable. If you come here regularly, it feels gradual, it's like losing weight or something, right? You don't notice until you see a lot lost friend. Um but it's unbelievable how much better it works now uh compared to a few years ago, so thank you to CPA for that.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of people that come here to get married, I never realized, a lot and
It seems like significantly more since the building's been uh
Right. And to be able to do that outside at a beautiful venue and people, like you said, get their pictures, but also to have a sprawling gorgeous property like this just sit there. Like this will allow us to be able to have events and
Be public events.
You know, maybe movie night out there or you know, I know that a few years ago, they had the um the Easter egg roll
Yeah.
one time, well, I kids will let it
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot that a lot of opportunity for the public to be able to enjoy the the area.
I I you know, this is exactly what I think the CPA was created for, uh historic preservation. Doesn't get much more historic and you know historically preserving than what this article points to. And you know, I know a lot of people, you might hear, I can't believe we're spending that type of money in Town Hall type thing. And it's, I don't look at it through that lens. If you go to a community and you see their town buildings beautiful, what does that say about the community that they live in and where they where they take pride?
Mm-hmm.
Um because it spreads, it's it's you know, it's it's contagious throughout the community. Um if you go to a community that has a falling downtown hall, that also says something about the community. Um you know, to shame that, but it does say something. So I think it's important that our our buildings be maintained and historically preserved, it's the the future.
I also think it's worth pointing out that even if you wanted to take a much more narrow financial analysis,
Oh yeah.
we're getting a far better return on investment through CPA on this building than what it would cost to build new. As we all know from seeing the cost of building new. Uh so it would be substantially more expensive uh beyond the kind of offense to history to let a building like this degrade. Uh it's not as if you could build a new municipal building to
Wouldn't look like this.
And it would not look like this.
Right.
Excellent. Alright, Article seventeen.
I'm I move to include and recommend Article seventeen.
Yeah.
Our second Lynn, the gentleman.
Stop. Right, I did too. Sorry to interrupt that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Uh the motion was by Craig and the second was by Mark, all in favor? Any other?
Thank you so much.
I gotta go on the motion for this.
So that that motion, Elizabeth, was to include and recommend Article seventeen, Roger Lynn, you name this.
Just might take a second.
There you go.
Alright, um I don't have to do this, but I think it might be helpful, some pictures will really I think actually end up saving time.
Alright.
Um the next two articles are larger in funding, so they may warrant more debate or discussion or understanding. Um candidly, I'm most excited about these two. I think uh everybody loves all their kids, but every so often, on any given day, a couple of them happen to hook up a little bit more. Um the reason for it is I think the next two articles, Article eighteen, which funds the school tennis, basketball and yes, some more pickleball courts. Um and also the uh Article nineteen, which is the R O um new uh enhanced and accessible playgrounds and outdoor classroom areas um are the ability for us to as a CPA to make some very large impact for a lot of people for many years to come. Um they're larger in cost and so I thought that some um pictures would show you, this is the application. Um and I I'll scroll through it, I won't read all of it, but if the first item that's up is Article eighteen, the tennis, basketball and pickleball courts, it's a one point six million dollar ask. Um one of the items that I wanted to make sure we talked about here, so on the CPC, we've introduced a more rigorous application review for projects like this. And what I mean by that is we focus not just on the project, whether it's current, but also future components. And for example, you'll see here a post tension concrete approach um for the, it's the same as on the Frobenham courts. Um and the reason why we did that for the um courts is because that has a much longer lifespan. Um so the current courts are asphalt, they lasted about ten years, they have cracks, you will see a few pictures. Um they are getting close to being unsafe, the high school uses the tennis courts. Um the league is on the verge of explaining to them that they can't use their courts anymore. Um so the need is great, but we didn't just stop at the immediate ask. We asked them what the incremental cost would be for a post tension concrete, which lasts much longer. We asked them about the facilities around it, like the fencing. So the last thing we wanna do is to invest in a meaningful project and have two things happen. One, they have to come back as an applicant and ask us for more because they just did what was the immediate ask to get by. Or two, they fixed a part of the project meaningfully but left those things around it that detract from the overall value. So putting a brand new court in would be great if the fence was dented, hit by cars, paint peeling, cheap, not working, appropriately so the gates don't work, then I'm not sure we created the value of the project. And since we have construction teams there already, it would make sense to get value to consider those other aspects. We're not looking for ways to spend money, what we're trying to do is to preserve the value of the investment we're making. So I don't want that to be misconstrued. Um let me
I love I love that, Tom, I think
Yeah, that was very light.
We like pause for a second and think about that because that's a a really new way of looking at that and really protecting the investment. Um I and you know, it it doesn't sound to me like you're saying, hey, what can we tack onto that? Like it's a very thoughtful approach and uh something very new, so I really, I I think that's really important. Thank you for sharing it that in that context.
Appreciate that. I'm gonna hop down to some pictures hopefully. Um I will tell you, the um applications that were submitted were incredibly thoughtful, incredibly detailed. Um they spoke about all of the benefits to the town, this isn't just a school thing. I think the pickleball courts make it very easy for you to understand that, that residents that might not have children in school or kids in high school should come down and use these facilities. The basketball courts are not for the high school basketball team. Uh they're certainly for the residents to come and use. And while the tennis courts are yes, used by the tennis team, so many other residents use these facilities as well. Um and the application was very thoughtful, um. I'm just gonna get to the pictures real quick. Uh you'll see that they reference our open space plan, our CPA plan, they do a great job integrating the project. Um incredibly detailed bids. This is kind of the overview of the project, so this is what we're looking to accomplish. You'll note that um in essence, we're taking one basketball court and pivoting it, I say we loosely, the applicant, but we like to think of it as a partnership. This is an unused sand volleyball court that had been donated um privately, which was awesome, but candidly, the maintenance and the amount of usage um factored into taking that, adding it as the third basketball court because there is a lot of use. It now enabled us to pivot the court and add four pickleball courts at the front. Um and now we're preserving in the five tennis courts in the back. Um and you'll see there's uh other items like fencing, um other smaller enhancements that are going along with the project as well.
One of the things that I heard at town meeting when we were talking about uh you know, fields and recreation is some people, as as we are a more aging community, sometimes people feel like all we're doing is making investment in recreational opportunities for the students. So calming out the fact that you know, the pickleball court courts are undeniably a huge success uh that we have already, but even reminding people that the basketball courts and the tennis courts as well, this is an investment not just for the schools, but really for all ages and abilities.
Yeah, and I think bringing diversity, whether it's uh in this case particular particularly maybe age to any type of area is helpful. I think it enables um if there are residents that don't have children in the schools and they don't come to this area frequently, it brings them to that and I think you're gonna hear a theme from me, it's 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 a campus theme. Um I'll probably be able to better illustrate it on the next particular article, but if you think about this as a particular campus and the opportunities that you can have as a resident, you're going to see an incredibly new, brand new school, the Blanchains and all that it entails, cutting edge outdoor into indoor um items. And now if you rotate and you go counterclockwise, you're gonna see a brand new development here. Um you know, investment in our town, our community, a a nice beautiful high school, um fields uh that we've taken care of and maintained in the turf fields. Um and then if you circle now full full circle, you'll go to R O and the middle school and we'll talk about the opportunity to enhance those playgrounds. And then it brings you full circle and connected back to Blanchains. And I give credit to the schools, I give credit to the town for the role they may have played for that thoughtful connection. Now it brings in the Clifford Grant Forest right there and there's definitely designs to make it so that you can go and have a nice outdoor experience in the Grant Forest. There is a a better slide in the R O school that will better illustrate this campus connection um criteria. But again, it goes back to not a lot of people appreciating the thoughtfulness of leadership and the amount of time that's required to actually quote unquote be able to say a campus connection experience. And then to weave so that you could circle through safely um and have all of those different experiences on this campus is incredible. Um I do wanna show you just a few pictures, um so these are worth honestly the thousand words. Um so these are the cracks, these are the repairs. Um I do wanna emphasize, this is through no fault of lack of maintenance, lack of dereliction, the go forward.
When when were those constructed?
Uh I think they're twelve to fifteen years now. Sorry, they're probably up in the application.
And they, I'm guessing they're they're past their lifespan.
Yes, um
Pictures demonstrate, but you know, like twelve to fifteen.
Two thousand and seven, so fifteen years old. There you go.
Which is like the extent of this
Yep.
These were and these were asphalt, right? And that's that's why, which is cheaper on the capital and acquisition side.
Correct. Yeah.
Uh but deteriorates faster.
Well said. Um great questions, uh not by me, I won't take ownership of the CPC asked great questions such as um are there maintenance schedules that are firmly identified and implemented for all of our properties? Certainly the answer is yes. Uh we asked questions about the post tension concrete, how their maintenance plan is, the answer is yes. The school is committed to ensuring that we execute against those. Um and they certainly did the best they could to repair this facility. I think there's one or two pictures that probably illustrated vests, um.
You can get hurt on those.
Yeah, there's there's that one, that's great, that's like an inch to an inch and a half lip by that post. Um you can just see these are the they're beyond their useful life. They've done a great job at trying to extend that, but it's just gotten too bad, too far. Um and so I we believe it's the right time and hence why we supported and recommended it wholeheartedly.
Fifteen years is a good number.
Right, especially for asphalt.
Yeah.
Um in New England. Um so that's what
Use, it's a bonus.
Yep.
And I'll leave me to look much more worn when you put it right next to a brand new playground, right? So everything like you do that one room and it huts over and then you realize you're gonna paint all the rest of it.
Well said, yes. So that's the um uh that is the tennis uh basketball, pickleball courts. One last item, you may ask the question, is there parking? Um we there was some concern that was raised because the parking lot is routinely full, especially at pickup and drop off. But the um I think the good news is that a lot of that current fullness is due to the parking by teachers, administrators from the Blanchains project. While that was wrapping up and then that parking will free up, so a lot of cars will naturally go over to where they are. May have already happened as I drive by there and that becomes more and more open every day.
These are an accessibility consideration for
Is all at the level of the parking lot. Um pathways would enable access um to participate in any of the courts. So I think that's a great question and consideration.
Excellent. Great, alright, alright.
So I move to include and recommend Article eighteen, second Lynn.
Roger Lynn, all in favor, you name this. Alright, last but not least, Article nineteen, what were your thoughts?
Article nineteen, this is the Richardson Olmsted School new enhanced accessible playgrounds and outdoor classroom. The request is for a three and a half million dollars. Um full disclosure, the applicant came before the CPC, their initial ask was for two million dollars. Um and that was for one of the two playgrounds, so there is a north and south playground at the school. When Richardson Olmsted was first started, it was two distinct schools or more distinct schools, if that makes sense. Uh I wasn't here at the time. Um and they had two playgrounds and as you see the overall layout, you'll appreciate um the two playgrounds. One of the playgrounds, the north side, actually abuts the middle school, so there is actually benefit to the middle's middle school um with this particular area. And this is an example of where because the process is what it is, we had a lot of dialogue and we appreciated that the applicant was coming out of a sensitivity to the amount being asked, but it would have only got half the job done. Um and in looking at the value, we believe this particular project can create to actually finish the connection of the campus. I think once you see the diagram, you'll appreciate why we encourage the applicant to increase their request, not to cover the two playgrounds. Um and I'll let the pictures start to show um more of the benefit. Um in case it comes up, uh I know oftentimes we get asked, um aren't they asking for a lot of money all the time? Um and that sometimes is because people don't appreciate what an applicant has or hasn't asked for. Factually, so the schools have asked for and received funding of seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars for three items back in two thousand eight, a playground, practice fields for turf, I think as we all recall in two thousand uh seventeen and nineteen. Um but it's not as if they have been very large projects or frequent. Um now, back when the um CPA first came into play, it couldn't support a lot of school projects or any school projects, if I appreciate the interpretation back in the day. But now it has been opened up and our ability to fund school projects like this um that still meet our open space and recreation criteria have enabled us to invest more funds in the projects.
Perspective, what did you say at the start of your presentation, the total revenue generation of CPA has been?
Thirty two point six million.
Right, I think that'll be a really important point at town meeting uh when you look at this two asks.
Yeah. And for greater context, oftentimes I'll receive inquiries or commentary about how the CPC functions and why we fund projects and are we an extension of the capital process of the town? And while I could understand that takeaway, I do think the CPA and CPC is tasked with very important focus of open space recreation, affordable housing and historic preservation. Um and so I don't look at this as an extension of your capital process, I look at this as us supporting what the town residents um basically have mandated us with their support to continue to do. So that's why I give you context for how much has been asked and I think Connor, you put a great comparison of not much for the schools of the thirty two point six million that we've raised, um.
But the capital budget always has things that can't be funded on it, there's there's so many more things that we need to fund, so anything that we can take out and appropriately put in another funding source
Agreed.
uh to free up that that funding availability for other important, you know, everything's equally important. That's why for the small amount of money that we contribute in our taxes to be able to have, we'd never be able to do this out of an operating budget, so.
Couldn't be more. I mean, the the comparison, and I may get this wrong, it may have changed, but the comparison and contrast of what the capital budget is able to support are things like security and keeping people safe.
Right.
Um and while I think recreation and the park is important, I think we all can appreciate where the scales land in terms of security and safety, is that a fair?
It is, and it's codified in our bylaws, adopted by the public that there's a very specific rank prioritization in the capital improvement process that starts with life-saving equipment because you're talking about things like ambulance, fire trucks, jaws and like
Yeah.
um defibrillators, things that um you have to prioritize over still incredibly worthwhile investments and with the cost of construction and supplies, I mean, we we're just not in a position, we we historically have not been. But that is not unique to you, that's why to see, that's one of the advantages of the CPA existing is that these are projects that are so worthwhile. Um but when competing against an ambulance, you usually don't make the 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 difficult cut and so this creates a protected string of funding that can do these amazing projects and improve the community.
Couldn't be more. Um the this is, I think illustrates what I was trying to display earlier. I think if you make it a little bit bigger. But if you think about it, we've really done an incredible job as a town. I think the residents have done a great job with their investment with the new Blanchains Elementary School um anchoring that development, outdoor space is incredible. Um now, if you circle it all the way around, this is the projects that are in question here. It's the north playground, you'll notice a tremendous amount of asphalt. Um this is the south playground, the same. But what we now are able to do is start to weave paths through But what we now are able to do is start to weave paths through, um creating uh areas of engagement, whether it's the north playground, which was the original request, the south playground that we would we have recommended be added and included, uh which would enhance this, the Clifford Grant uh access uh by the high school right here, the high school facilities, the fields that people have an incredible experience at. Um, then now we get over to the high school um tennis courts, basketball courts and soon to be pickleball courts. And then you can weave yourself right back into where the Blanch Ames project is. And I think everybody knows or has seen the Blanch Ames um fields that will be built here, uh where the old Parkview school was. A lot of shares have been taken, a lot of tears have been shed recently while Parkview coming down, um but all in the eyes of progress. So this is what I mean by campus. Um, you know, there is a lot of, uh I probably can show you the next picture of the design. So that's the north and the south playground. Um, this is the current layout. You can see um security and safety are uh being considered. You have an emergency access route you have, you will on the next slide. It's coming. Here we go. Let's see if I can pivot this. So you can see, um, you know, this is the uh emergency road um access, but they put designs on it so that while it's not in use and it's closed during the day, um, you can have it as a play space. It actually enables you to understand the pathway, the flow. Um, outdoor classroom shaded structure, um a lot of multi-basketball court, gaga ball pits, two of them, high demand. Uh, you'll notice that there's smaller open lawn area. Again, we really are concerned about the ability to maintain it. Drought resistant plants being used um so that we can guard against anything dying from our investment. Um, seating areas, uh cafe area with tables, um benches for stopping area, outdoor classroom with bench seating, um swing uh in a poured-in-place um rubber uh area as well. Um, so I think hopefully what you can see, the same designer that might look familiar as the Blanch Ames school also was utilized for this. Um, I think a couple other things to mention. One, I believe it's a good investment in terms of what the children will experience, but also for the residents of our town. Um, there's no question in our mind, uh thankfully we have Meredith Keach on our board um at the C P C. Uh, a lot of anecdotal feedback that the Blanching School has drawn people into the town of Easton, that it has attracted new people to move in. I think whenever you are able to have assets that bring people in and create demand in a marketplace, um create demand in a marketplace that helps support home values. I think that's a uh opportunity for everybody. By creating a continuum of engagement, not just from Blanch Ames, but now they ki- kids get to R O. If you haven't been to the R O playgrounds, you should, uh but they're all asphalt, uh they're all old. I think you saw an investment from two thousand eight that the C P C put into jungle gyms at R O, they are still there. Um, I think if you left Blanch Ames and you got to R O, you would have a decidedly different experience that would be much lower in quality. But I also think it brings the the indoors out. It creates exterior learning opportunities. It creates what I think is just again an enhanced experience for all of our kids uh and children, which I think supports home values ultimately overall from a business perspective. So I I'll be quiet, but this is the um north playground. Um, at the top you'll see is the Easton Middle School, at the south is R O. And what we basically said was, look, we think this is a great idea, but for you to complete that continuum, get a single contractor, maybe we get some economies of scale, but the rev- and I don't think things will get cheaper in terms of construction over time. So we just felt on the C P C that we asked the applicant to come back to us with a larger request and the C P C unanimously supported it.
This would be fully accessible.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
This is a really important aspect and I believe lent itself to some material selection as well.
Absolutely, and safer, so there'll be a lot more fencing than there is now. Um, so it'll be easier for teachers to have line of sight for any entry waypoints for people that may come uh who should not be on the site uh at the wrong time. So that the teachers now, if you'll see, um, you know, these items are fenced, but you can see you only have to watch one area of entry, so to speak, an area of entry. So uh the schools did a great job impressing upon us their thoughtfulness about keeping our kids safe during the day.
Cause that's all open right now and accessible.
Correct.
Yeah, fully accessible after I was.
Yes, well, so I actually um there's a temple uh road race that started and ended here yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
And I was thinking like, should have got a table out there for for Tom, but it I mean it's it really it's it's kind of it's 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 kind of a I don't I don't wanna say it's a parking lot, but it's not that distinguishable from that.
It's not. Was there a a view of the south?
Uh, so in my particular set of documents, not yet. Uh, so the process worked, we received the north application. We quickly pivoted, we actually delayed the vote for a week, but not enough time to build the south documents. Um, but they will be coming for town meeting. Um, and it is of the similar vein. Uh, so outdoor experience, uh safety, um seating areas, uh learning. Um, and then same thing in terms of uh engagement with kids, you know, gaga ball pits are much more.
What's a gaga ball pit?
Uh.
This is a picture, you're the next the next slide, I I you have photos of these uh of these individual assets that look pretty incredible.
Craig, you know the gaga ball pit?
You know, I've heard of it and I have no idea what it is.
So let's.
It's the next pickleball, right?
Right, right there on the bottom.
Okay. It's a gaga pit? Okay.
When you don't have little kids anymore, you don't know anything.
I know.
I love the shared playground. Yes, yeah.
Interesting.
But my kids have a lot of fun, it's nice.
Well, my first thought was honestly, wow, that's a lot of money. But seeing this and and you know, I'm thinking it's just to put up a another jungle gym, right? But but you're right, tying this all to a connected experience, how do you take kids from Blanch Ames School and then put them in where they are now? The other thing with all that asphalt, you know, we really are trying to be committed to being more environmentally friendly and with climate change and having kids on those hot days on that hot asphalt, on those hot jungle gym bars. I mean, um, you know, it's it's that would be a real downer to go you know, you're supposed to graduate up to better things and to go from something really great to something not so great. Um, if a brain in the outdoor classroom parts of this, you're really maximizing the opportunity here to uh not just reinvest in a jungle gym, but to really create that educational experience.
Right.
So that makes me think of it a lot differently in terms of what the the money value is on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
What types of materials are gonna be used for the hard scape?
Yep, great question. Uh, so it's called poured-in-place. Um, so it's, you might have experienced it if you've taken your kids, it's that rubber compressed pellets. Um, it's encapsulated rubber, uh so it's supposed to be designed to make sure that there are no harmful chemicals that are engaged and that can leach into the field. We did on the C P C raise the concern about understanding the materials. There's a pro and a con. It's incredibly safe, it helps um with accessibility, uh it helps with uh injuries. Uh, but at the same point, we appreciate it is an encapsulated product. We've asked the school to make sure that they address that uh as we go through the process. Uh, and they are working hard. They've um explored alternatives, like there are, I think corkine, uh which is made of cork. Um, we researched that and I say we, the applicant, um serious concerns about it from mold a mold perspective and from the ability to clear snow off it without ruining it. Um, so I as with most things, I would say that there are pros and cons. Um, this seems to be the best of all uh in terms of safety, access uh enables access across the entire facility. If you used engineered wood fiber, um what you need to do is to put down rubber mats to provide accessibility, so it's wood chips if you think about it. So people with wheelchairs would have to only go where the areas are of the rubber mats. Um, but again, there have been some of these poured-in-place facilities that they turned out the materials that were used um had harmful chemicals in them, so we've asked for testing. We've asked for every step we could do to make sure that it's safe. Um, ultimately though, we felt like it didn't stop the project and it in our end, we recommended it unanimously.
And we we went through that on the school planning committee also and we were concerned.
Right now, it's the same, it's the same as the one chain school.
Yeah, we were concerned about that and looked at all of that and of course looking at it through an accessibility lens as well. With that engineered wood chips, that the the maintenance costs or the maintenance time even and cost on these things. You'd have to go out and rake that every day, make sure it was level with a level, um make sure it was compacted. There would be no way to maintain that in a way that was possible to do. Um, and and it's it's still not accessible, you know, it's it claims that it has accessibility, but it it only on the perfect conditions that 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 and I I would say that that would be questionable.
Mm-hmm.
But uh the encapsulated uh you know, this it was uh everything that we ranked and looked at, that was the best thing, the best way to go. There's no perfect solution. Everything has some kind of a a chemical agent in it or whatever, but this was the least impactful that we were able to explore. So I'm glad that the C P C uh came to that same conclusion independently.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we we got to the same place.
What's the um lifespan on that material? Just curious.
Great question. I don't know the exact lifespan, um more so than the alternatives that we were able to identify.
Okay, give me a second now, just in terms of what we'd be looking at, cause if if it is something that's potentially chemical and breaks out over time, we'd want to be factoring in replacements. I think that's a really important um data point to have for town.
I think also we'll go back a couple of slides. That is not the surface material of this entire thing, right?
Okay.
This is in limited spots where there's potentially high impact stuff like the swings, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Um.
Yeah, I I got a history of the.
So it's 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 certainly not the majority of it, right? It's at bottom left for the swings. Um, something that so again, today's book was killed during the construction of the Blanch Ames School and this is the surface, so it was a total plate structures. Um, for a concern of potential breakdown down the line and we'll get more information uh in advance of town meeting. This whole area is not in the aquifer, not feeds the wells that have people us, right?
Yeah.
So I I don't think anyone would, I hope no one would say Easton hasn't been pretty aggressively working on piepost treated water, things of nature, but even um at least down to that specific concern, it's it's not in the same groundwater recharge area that is feeding those wells that those plants are feeding well to.
Yeah. Same opportunity, we have to make sure he does due diligence to minimize is is worthwhile also.
Whatever so. Right.
Um, which is that's another great point, that it's not an offer, but there is still thermal contact and other things.
Sure.
So I wanna make sure that we just have a plan for testing as well possibly, just to make sure we're on top of it, since this is a hot topic.
Agreed, and credit to the residents of our town, they reached out more actively to us on the topic. So we've tried to demonstrate as much stewardship, thoughtfulness and concern um without note to ask a lot of questions. Um, and then to try to come back and understand the trade-offs between the alternatives.
These things are hard, we're faced in this life with lots of hard trade-offs, the things we use and need every day.
No, right.
And accessibility being a massively important factor as well, so.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, uh, if I may, I have a I have an offer by uh one of her asked my questions or comments. Um, so when I initially heard this three and a half million dollars, I almost fell out of my seat. Um, three and a half million dollars for playground. Um, you know, it's just how much do things cost in the conversation? What is going on in this world? What are what are we doing?
Yeah.
Where we're spending three and a half million dollars in playground. Um, and then you know, I I gotta remove myself from myself and not look at it through a a kid in nineteen eighty-eight sliding down metal you know, slide and burning the bottom. Um, that being said, um I think you you started off this this meeting and you said, I'll paraphrase, but it was along the lines of value, longevity, uh and impact. And this does that, but one of the things that's wrong here is you call it a playground. That is far from a playground.
Fair.
Um, and you know, the the framing of it to call that, if that's a playground, I mean, I I don't know, we have to create a new word for what that is.
Yeah.
Um, it's it's amazing. Um, it's it's three and a half million dollars. It's a ton of money. Um, and my question is, how much will three and a half million is the contribution that C P A will is is suggest amount for this?
Yeah.
How much is this actually gonna cost?
Yep.
Because if like they so they've given a price on this and and I'm not saying the south side, which I know that that was your your guys' due diligence. I love that you said you've gotta include both of this. You can't just do one and not the other.
Yeah.
Um, but my concern is in the like a year from now, we'd be like, oh, there actually wasn't enough money to both sides.
Yeah.
We could only get the north side, because if it's just the north side, then like I that my problem was exponentially larger. Um, so I I wanna be sure that this does include both sides and it is captured in this massive price tag.
Yep, uh so great question. So the total project um is four point four million dollars uh as currently designed, inspected and scoped. And they're still again sussing out the south part, south playground. So uh in essence, that creates a gap of our three and a half of just over eight hundred thousand dollars, close to nine hundred thousand dollars. They do have uh two hundred thousand dollars from S R funds, uh the application's approved and committed. They have thirty-five thousand dollars already committed from the R O P T A. They have state earmark with fifty thousand dollars. Uh, they have a goal of a direct fundraiser of twenty-five thousand dollars. And they are seeking additional capital from the town. If it's available, it might very well not be available and that wasn't we considered the application without those monies being available. Um, and then so they either have more fundraising to do or they'll have to go lower in scope. Or three, you'll notice the estimate in terms of the total project cost if done in two phases was four point four six versus four point three nine, very small spread. And we believe that was conservative, so we're hopeful when we go to bids that we'll be able to find a contractor who can do both for more affordable rate. Rather than just the the difference there between four point three nine and four point four five, it's not a lot of money. So we're hopeful by consolidating into a larger project, we'll have the opportunity to gain some uh economies of scale and that will have some savings there. The other aspect, and it can be listed here, but we are um we believe we have some material opportunities for private donations. Um, so there is, the school can't directly go out and solicit that, but I am aware that there are several people in town that are trying to solicit private donations, not just for the um what I'll call playgrounds and external teaching areas, learning areas. Um, but also if you think about the basketball courts. Um, so I can't put a number to that and it would be inappropriate for an applicant to put a number to that. But that is an avenue that they are, that hopefully the town will be able to step up and support this. So they're not all the way to bright, they have a work to do and candidly as the C P C, we kinda like to see that. We like you to have skin in the game. Um.
Words on my mouth.
Right.
Yes, I I love that too. I just hope they can do it fast enough before the prices continue to rise.
I thought you the name was a bit scary, this playground does sound.
Yeah. This is over, believe it or not, this should be done in a year. Um, I'll give a plug. I usually don't give or maybe I do give names, like I'll call you all out for your great work, but you know, credit to uh in this particular case, Mister Getchold, he happens to be the principal of R O. Um, I've been fortunate as a parent to have both my kids be with him, not just through Parkview, but R O. Um, I bring that up, um not because I happen to be biased personally, but from a professional standpoint, I've seen his diligence, level of detail, engagement. Um, and he's spot on. Um, he is already working collaboratively with the C P C. Meredith Keach is a uh highly engaged participant to set up a steering committee so that they meet regularly to support this initiative. Um, from a C P C perspective with this level of spend, we candidly like to be involved, so we like to see you set up a committee that we can attend. Not necessarily as a voting member, but as somebody who can understand, are you using the money in a certain way that the C P C and the residents of this town, if we're so lucky, voted to support. And we will not only be an active participant now through development, but it will stay as an ongoing committee while they're building. So um it's our way to stay engaged to basically also make sure, again, we're getting what we expected to get as a town. Um, but we can also be supportive. We can make connections and support them in their process in ways that um we probably they couldn't do necessarily on their own. But I give a plug to them, the application is top-notch, the level of engagement was top-notch and they're already developing plans to scale back some of the build, if in fact they believe they'll be short to whatever dollar degree. So they believe that even under its current incarnation, they could scale back the build while preserving the essence, the majority of the key elements um and have those funds be available. We'd lose something, I I think they believe that, but they could do it in a way that didn't detract from the overall nature of the project.
Um, is with the so the C P C, they unanimously support this?
They did.
Okay, and um what this is like a one of the largest contributions the C P C has made.
It is, yeah.
Uh, is it, where does it fall on that scale?
I wanna say top five, def- maybe top three, the Gil property would be one, I remember.
Shovel works.
Shovel, shovel works.
Oh, shovel works one, Gil's two, this might be three.
Yeah, this is sizable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's not. If it's not three, it three, four and five would probably be one.
It's a five. Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, yeah. Um it is, hence our request and engagement collaboratively for um the steering committee
嗯
um that we could be a part of as the CPC. Uh we like to meet regularly, we do meet regularly on projects of this size, uh both before they become official applications and after. So that we can understand and truly the appreciate the value it supposedly supposed to commit to the residents of our town. Um and we have a meeting this Friday on it.
You make excellent points and very, very well presented.
Appreciate it.
And I'd love that you use uh a designer, especially the one that already that we have already worked with in the past and understands uh you know, the values and and things that we consider to be important in town. Uh that makes a big difference.
Good call about it. If you think about it, we, by doing so and the project being so fresh from Blanchames, we didn't have to recreate a lot of the planning, engagement with community residents um for the important features. Um but they were able to elevate it to the next level for the age growth. So I thought they leveraged what they could from the prior, saving us time and money um on consultant use. Um but then they could add their own flavor for these particular schools' benefit.
Great.
I'll say one more thing, again, just back to the level of detail. So regarding the open space, the use of gardens, items like that, they, the schools and Mr. Getchel already have a plan to outreach to other organizations in the town who happen to do a lot of gardening or caretaking. Um high school has clubs, for example, um and there isn't as much space as you would think in our town for students to be able to participate in items like this. So um the items they built in, they have thoughtful plans on how to both maintain, but also how to enhance and create engagement and other touch points within the community.
Well, you sold me. All right, if there's no other questions, Craig?
So I move to uh include and recommend Article nineteen.
Second land.
Bajra Lim, all in favor? Yes.
Awesome.
Um thank you. I know, you know, you're busy, uh your job is busy, and to take your time tonight, it was very worthwhile for us to be able to to get this in-depth uh information. You did an amazing job presenting it and really thank you so much for your commitment, and I'm so glad that you stepped up to to join that committee.
Thank you all so much for your support and engagement. Great questions tonight. Again, to the town, the employees and certainly the CPC. If I could just ask for one more minute of time, uh for the CPC, there was a a gentleman who I never had the pleasure of knowing, but really contributed an awful lot to our organization and to our town. So if I could, I'd just like to read an item that's from our annual report. We'd like to commemorate the passing of John Grant on February ninth, twenty twenty-three, at the age of eighty-one. Mr. Grant was a community leader for environmental, agricultural and land preservation interests. He served in the conservation committee for more than four decades. Um he was an original member of the community preservation committee after advocating for Easton's adoption of the CPA in two thousand one. And so much like you folks, um and many people in our town who provide their service, I think that gentleman earned a little bit of special recognition, so I appreciate you indulging me for an extra minute.
We we talked about that uh on at the select board when when he had passed, and I'm glad that you're bringing that up again, and it is important that people hear that.
Awesome.
He was involved in a lot and uh wonderful person, and I'm glad that the CPC took the time to think to bring that forward, so.
Credit to the team. Awesome.
Yeah, you got a great committee there.
I agree. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom, it's always a pleasure.
Always a pleasure. Good to see you all and present.
Next, we have Article twelve for discussion and vote, the approval of a refinancing agreement between Mass Housing Partnership Fund to Shovel Works Two LLC along with the regulated loan operations fees and other documents in connection with the Shovel Works project and the Preservation Act of twenty twenty-four for sewage to the loan agreement between the town of Easton as a lender and B C Shovel Works LLC, Shovel Works One LLC and Shovel Works Two L LLC as borrowers. So uh this, we've got a lot of information on that. Thank you so much for your patience in sitting through a long meeting.
No problem at all, and uh gratefully, you guys didn't want to to get us any agenda tonight.
Excellent. So you just wanna introduce yourself and uh just give us a high-level overview, introduction of what this is?
Sure. Um so I'm Julie Sandy. I'm an attorney at Nixon P V D representing the developer for AM Shovel Works. And this is
I'm Matt Bachman, Senior Appositionist and associate with Beacon Communities.
So as um you know, I provided the memo just to try to give you as much background as I could, cause I know it's a lot of information and a lot of documents. Um so I worked with Connor, I put together what I thought would be helpful. Um so we are doing a refinancing for both AM Shovel Works One and Two with Mass Housing Partnership Fund Board. And uh for AM Shovel Works Two, the loan is due, the senior loan with Mass Housing Partnership is due on April ninth, so um just it's important to us to be able to close this um next Friday.
Talking under the wire.
Yes, tight timeline that we've been working with M H P on, and uh they just don't have flexibility to to extend that deadline, so it's been um under the wire. So that's why we especially appreciate you squeezing us in tonight. Um so the what we're requesting approval of is the refinancing with M H P, the um re-subordination of the town CPA loan um by executing the subordination agreement. Um we are also uh terminating the mass release on AM Shovel Works Two. Um the the mass release was initially put in place because there were historic tax credits. And once the historic tax creditor uh investor exited the deal in uh twenty twenty-one, I believe it was, um the it's no longer necessary for us to keep the mass release structure in place, so we're collapsing that structure just to simplify things. Um so we are asking for the town of Easton's approval for the termination of the mass release, um execution of some documents in connection with that as well as an amendment to the operating agreement for the borrower in connection with the termination of mass release.
So, Dottie, you want?
Give me just a second, please.
Okay.
So uh working uh with Julia on this, we also reviewed all this with Lisa Mina, Town Council. It's about a hundred pages of documentation that you received. Julie was kind enough to kind of collate. Um the kind of, in my view, having uh worked on a couple of the uh or received a few of these over the years, the interest of the town in particular, it's a change to CPA loan, this doesn't make any changes to any of those, so there's some kind of four or so really important aspects of, there's more than four, but from this perspective, really important aspects of the town's relationship with Beacon. Um references to CPA loan that we worked through and Julie was kind enough to confirm in writing. Here, including that the existing, um in my view, uh very complicated uh LLC relationship between landlord, tenant and licensor for between Beacon, Chamber of Commerce and the cultural district, it remain would not be impacted in any way by this. So that's a a key interest of the town that's maintained. These requests of the board grants have no impact on the total number of affordable units that are currently offered at Shovel Works. Um and it maintains what now basically function as four floating affordable units for folks up to a hundred percent of A M I in addition to the statutorily required affordable units by forty B, and I believe actually conserves them for an additional seven years.
Seven, yeah.
Uh so Beacon would have otherwise been able to get rid of those now. Um the historic tax credits are not needed or not necessarily relevant anymore, insofar as they had a five-year, I believe, term on them that mandated that Shovel Works was rental only after that period of time expired, which I believe was back in twenty eighteen. Shovel Works could condo-wise at any point, but that's a Beacon's choice. Um these loan agreements do not change uh the requirement I should Beacon decide to condo-wise, uh to make what basically excess certain excess payments um to the town, depending on where their loan uh repayment is from CPA. And it does not have uh any uh impact on the maturity date or obligations uh for repayment uh on the CPA loan due in two thousand and thirty-one. Is that
That's fully accurate.
Yep.
And it doesn't impact the TIF, right?
It does not impact the TIF either, which uh I'm hard to believe is expiring next year.
I think so, yeah.
Um so the tax improvement finance district, as part of making this project possible, expires next year. Uh we are frankly very excited about that.
Can you just explain to people at home that don't know all the jargon of what a TIF is and uh how that helped make this possible and how this will help us when that expires?
So to borrow from Tom, credit to people that are not me, cause I was not uh involved in building a financial uh packaging for this, but it was it was pretty complex and creative. There was a lot of different streams that came together, uh and correct me if I'm wrong, um Beacon, yeah, having a TIF there was also a very helpful uh basically cost avoidance of a build-out of a project where, when you do a TIF, a community through town meeting, which town meeting here did approve, uh basically it agrees to a um definite schedule of tax payments to be made on a property that and I don't have the exact details of Shovel Works off the top of my head, but typically what you'll you'll see will be redevelopment, a major redevelopment, whereas an incentive, an economic development incentive to a developer, a community will agree to uh hold property taxes at a fixed or a pre-negotiated schedule of value rather than hitting them with the full new growth right out of the gate. Um and that that creates a financial capacity in the earlier years of a build-out. When the TIF expires, you then get basically that new growth in that year. So we'll be looking at that in fiscal twenty-five. Um which is great. And that'll be treated as a a rental, uh assuming that's where Beacon's still at. And if and when Beacon condoizes, then there would be new growth associated with the conversion of those units from affordable to ownership laws.
So that how does that impact affordable affordable units, right, if you're condo-wise?
So just to leave that separate from these transactions, but if and when Beacon does condoize, and this has been the case since the uh original layout of the the financial framework, um right now, the way forty B is structured, when you have a mixed uh income rental community like Shovel Works or Avalon, uh you have a certain amount that have to be uh affordable uh to either sixty or eighty percent of A M I. And then the remainder typically goes to the seventy-five percent, which is the ballpark at Shovel Works. Even if those are market rate, which they are, they all count on your S H I for compliance of forty B. If that then turns into condos, you maintain, then it's only one-for-one, so you would continue to have roughly thirty-ish um units on your S H I, but you would lose credit for the market rate, cause those would just be market rate homes at that point. That is one of the reasons among many why a couple of years ago, board agreed to basically quasi-lip with uh the Union Street forty B to basically per perpetually create safe harbor for town in against the twenty-twenty decennial census and the um ability uh should Beacon wish to condoize.
But it does it does set us back for the S H I.
Lose eight years of units.
Yeah. And and that, you know, I don't feel like we should, we are to to manage the S H I. There's two ways of looking at it. One is you're trying to check off the box and just look at the numbers and build to just meet that number, but the other is the culture of the community to value affordable housing, so that our older people have a place to live
Yeah.
uh when they wanna downsize, and so that younger families have an opportunity to live in our community. So I think that we've been doing a really good job at balancing both of those through our Affordable Housing Trust and the voters of Easton that support those policies, and certainly this select board that really takes that into consideration as well. I just uh that wanna add that the Shovel Works um is one of the um one of the developments that have been highlighted across the state to this day, you know, in the housing world.
It is, yeah.
When you're out, we talk about, um I'm from Easton, that's where the Shovel Works is, and it won uh national awards and historic preservation awards. Um it was really incredible and
Very successful.
you know, none of us were here then when it started, so I was an act, a housing activist at the time, never dreamed in a million years I would end up on the select board. Uh but this all happened before I was even on, so it it's just really it's nice, you know, when when boards take a vote to do something that could be controversial at the time, because we, nobody can have that crystal ball to see what that was like at the time. A lot of people that are on elected boards that make those decisions, um you know, aren't even here to realize them, but I will say that many people that don't want housing will say, well, it's easy for you to make that vote because it's not in your neighborhood. It is in my neighborhood, and as as somebody in the neighborhood, I value that investment. It was uh a blinded area before that, and it's really driven it's it's just re-retransformed that whole downtown. Uh we were able to bring in the sewer, bring in the restaurants. We wouldn't have the farmer's daughter. I love telling that story, because you know, using housing to drive economic development is really so smart, so visionary.
嗯
Um you know, Connor's predecessor, they came up with the idea to overbuild the wastewater treatment facility to be able to take some of those properties with failed septic, so you know, we had historical preservation, economic development, uh booming downtown, uh um environmental, you know, uh enhancement. It really was a is a winner, and all the concerns that people have, myself included, you know, there's gonna be a hundred and seventy-eight cars driving by my driveway every day, I'm never gonna get out. Doesn't happen. That's not how it works. Uh I walk by there all the time. The property is meticulously maintained. It looks like the day they built it, um you know, and people people that live there love it, so it's a big win for us, and uh we appreciate that value.
That's great to hear, and Beacon's very thankful for the town's support.
Yeah. All right, well, you know, we have smart people that look at this, like Connor said, um our attorneys took a look at it. What what I really cared about were those four points, getting that incorporated into the letter to pull that out, so that, you know, even if we really understand it, you know, in a few years, other people that might be on this board will look at it and we try to keep the paper trail clean and easy and readable for people in the future, so that they'll know what we were talking about um in in the historic aspect of it, so I appreciate uh calling that stuff out in the letter. So we have a particular
We have a very, very long vote, uh but we can treat this, in my view, like we do with the votes for bond issuances, where uh you could
Craig, what?
vote to uh um approve the transactions in front of you as presented in the text, and we will incorporate the text verbatim into the minutes. I assume that's fine for the
That's good.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Craig was looking forward to reading that.
So so move, Bajra.
Second land.
So that's Bajra Lim, all in favor? You handle this. Great.
Thank you. Thank you for your
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll look at the presentation.
I know, I know. I couldn't tie you up for another hour and a half. You know how many questions I have, Tom? Bye, team. Good to see you all.
Bye, Tom.
Take care, Tom.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. All right, item thirteen. We have a discussion in both nominations on the inspectors of animals, Jordan Holbrook and Leanne Neal. So we have a memo in our packet submitted by Kristen Kennedy, the Director of Health and Community Services, requesting the nomination of Jordan Holbrook and the male to serve as animal inspectors for the Department of Agricultural Resources, Division of Animal Health. Currently, Ms. Holbrook serves the town in this capacity. He's part of her job as the town's animal control officer, and Ms. Neal serves as an alternate animal control officer. The term expiration for this appointment is April thirty of twenty twenty-four, and it is recommended that we appoint each of them um and do it individually by roll call. Anybody have any comments or questions?
They're doing a great job.
No, they are a terrific job, well, terrific job. Happy to to support this.
Yeah. Yeah. I've heard wonderful things. I remember when Ms. Holbrook was first uh appointed to to that position, and she was new, and uh she's really made a tremendous impact in the community. Everybody knows her, and she's done a wonderful job uh caring for that position, uh important position in that town. So Craig, if you wanna make a a roll call, uh a a motion and uh hold it a second, and then we'll do a roll call vote uh separately for
Which one?
uh starting with Jordan Holbrook.
Okay, so I I move that we appoint Jordan Holbrook, the Inspector of Animals, second land.
So that's Bajra and Lynn, and uh let's start with you on a roll call, John.
Stacy Holbrook.
Leanne Holbrook.
Full Genetti Holbrook.
Bajra Holbrook.
Excellent.
I move to appoint Leanne Neal as the alternate that's the the alternate animal control officer or?
Second land.
Um is it the alternate animal control officer?
Yes, no, I'm sorry.
I think that's a typo. It should be the alternate inspector of animals.
The alter, okay, so appoint Leanne Neal as the alternate inspector of animals, second land.
So that's Bajra and Lynn, a roll call vote, John.
Stacy Neal.
Leanne Neal.
Full Genetti Neal.
Bajra Neal.
Excellent. All right, and thank you to those two. Um next, we have the town administrator update, musical facilities replacement, we expire D two W.
Okay, Dottie, uh we keep this on a re-agenda in the event, before there's any questions on the progress of this project, which as we talked about in more detail a couple of weeks ago, is currently trending towards a summer local approval between a special town meeting and a dead exclusion. Uh I don't have a substantive update tonight, just was gonna make some work, so I'm going, got the flagging done um uh for our wetland delineation, uh we have a verbal uh confirmation that permitting uh should be doable on uh five twenty-four depot street for the consultant at least fire public works uh in the Wolf Well, et cetera, which is very important, so we're gonna keep working on that, start working with CONCOM um and stay at it, anticipate in April um whether they actually come to the board, because it will be at zero cost, or we we send a kind of informational update out to the board and put something online. We're gonna be working with P M A to um drill down on some of their scope for public outreach as we start to lock in uh real We're gonna be working with PMA to um drill down on some of their scope for public outreach as we start to lock in uh real project financing. Um we did submit and have been uh told by uh the Congressman's Office that uh at least for now, we're we're moving forward uh with a community project funding request uh to US Congress. It'll be about two point seven five million. Uh there is a FEMA uh emergency operations center grant uh for a program uh through uh the House Representatives that uh can cover eligible uh square footage costs associated with new construction of emergency operations centers. And so we we kind of backed out the eligible costs on a square footage basis of what the new police fire uh facility, what would be the E O C. Uh pulled together a grant ask and then submitted that and uh we'll be submitting letters of support um by tomorrow. And we'll keep working at that. Starting at some of the finances and um what to come.
Excellent. Terrific. Any questions? All right, um item fifteen, the fiscal twenty twenty four budget change memo from the town administrator.
So I need to move um so we're working our floor ports out over here. This will hopefully be more brief than the initial presentation. There's no graceful way to do that. There we go. Thank you, Dottie. Uh so this is uh first change memo to preliminary fiscal twenty four budget. Uh figured I would do a quick presentation since this came hot off the press, was sent to the board a few hours ago. Um didn't expect to necessarily fully read it um in between then and the meeting. So um as is typical with any of our operating budget cycles, we issue a preliminary budget typically in February, has to be before March first under the charter. And then we iterate on it uh usually on a monthly or monthly-ish basis, getting towards April. Um not required, but the past few years, we've really um striven to have the budget fully balanced by the end of April because that is when we have the joint meetings between the Select Board Finance Committee uh and the schools join us as well um to present, have all the departments come in and do a deep dive on their individual operating budgets. We ideally want those to be in a place where we know that what's being presented is is balanced and it's going to be taken at town meeting. So this is the first change uh to preliminary budget. Uh it summarizes the changes that we've made to that preliminary budget issued in February. Um good news is that those changes have reduced the projected deficit uh that we started at, about one point five million, uh down to nine hundred and sixty two thousand. Adjustments on both sides of the ledger provide a revised uh preliminary expense level of a hundred and four million and a revenue projection of a hundred and three million. So this is welcome progress, but um for reasons of the detail of this presentation and our memo, much of that remaining gap uh that we need to close will have to come from reduced safer preliminary operated budget requests from the town and schools. So this is a a quick summary of what's actually changed uh in a quantitative sense from February twenty seventh. Uh on the revenue adjustment side, uh taxation is a minor adjustment of fifty thousand for uh debt service for the Blanchett School based on actual debt issuance. Local receipts have been increased by about sixty thousand. Uh this reflects an agreement with the Southeastern Regional School for a program cost share for a a school resource officer uh that is working there. So we're very much appreciative appreciative of that. Uh we've had some setbacks on the revenue side. Um I guess I should have said this at the top. That one point five number, that's the deficit, so we we want that to be going away. So um uh when you see a number shown on a column as an add thirty six thousand, that's not a good thing. That's adding to the deficit. So on the revenue setback side, we have the state budget. So we issued our budget on February twenty seventh. State budget was issued right around the same time. We had carried what we thought were pretty conservative revenue estimates. I think from the time I've been here, this is the first time we've ever had to revise and a revenue estimate backwards from a preliminary budget. That's not usually the direction we go in. We had hoped that the state would keep the fiscal twenty three increase levels as the new standard, which was sixty dollars minimum aid per pupil and uh roughly five uh percent in unrestricted government aid. Uh unfortunately, that budget contained the uh former minimum, so roughly half of that. Thirty dollars um per student in Easton of increased state spending, so that amounts to about a hundred thousand dollars for a forty five million dollar school district. As well as a two percent increase to unrestricted general government aid, um which is obviously inadequate. So uh state assessments on the other side of the ledger, state charges to Easton are proposed to increase by seven percent. So the net there of new state revenue available for appropriation to Easton is um one percent. So um combined, so you see the thirty six thousand shown here, but when you add that with the increased uh assessments, it's it it's an add of eighty two thousand to the deficit. Um not contained in the operating budget because it's more capital uh relevant, but it was something I wanted to point out, and I'm happy came up talking about CPA projects is that in addition to the current proposal for the uh operating budget from state, which would see about a one percent increase to our second largest operating revenue category, current proposals for critical state capital programs that have a massive impact on municipal level, like chapter ninety for our road repairs, are still proposed to be level funded at two thousand and twelve levels. Uh so those have lost roughly two thirds of their purchasing power uh and so will be level funded for eleven years in a inflationary uh environment like this is uh tend not to would cut. That then increases the pressure on our uh capital budget. On the expense uh adjustment side, I only have four or five slides tonight, so if anyone would like to enter up, please do. Um on the expense side, I employee benefits and insurance, some progress here. Uh so that's a reduction to the deficit. We've cut the proposed budget increase there by two hundred sixty two thousand and change. This is reflective of rates for health insurance for active and retired employees starting July one um based on our current actual enrollments, so that is positive. Um the increase here of here is larger than what we've seen in the past of G I C. G I C has typically performed under market. But we were uh very conservative. I think we projected six or seven percent increase there and it came in closer to uh three-ish, I think. So that's positive. Workers' comp insurance, we've revised that based on recent information from our carriers. So since the last budget, we received actuals on a lot of our insurances, not just um health insurance, but also property casualty and liability. So this is a reduction of a proposed large increase. So uh workers' comp, property li- and liability are carried by the same carrier for Easton. Property and liability in particular are increasing because of revaluations of the property the town owns, but in particular adding the Blanchett A M School to our statements of values. As you can imagine, it is worth a lot more money than uh center school or a law park view work, so ensuring your cost quality. Uh but we were very conservative about it at the beginning, so these are collectively are reductions of two hundred sixty two thousand, twelve thousand, fifty four thousand to those fixed costs, which is always good news. On the energy side, so you won't see uh a change here, but it's, I still felt it was worth noting. Uh we, as part of our ongoing uh climate uh policy efforts, but also uh financial management efforts, those two things can intersect. Um we have been taking a look at our net metering generation of our existing solar arrays that we have in Easton on schools, on the landfill, as well as for our power purchase agreements. And we have sufficient excess credits being generated today based on those arrays and purchase agreements that we can allocate those out against accounts in the coming year to soften any incremental impact uh that will result from the recent energy power purchase agreement, not per community choice. Uh before our accounts affected in December of two thousand twenty three, we did just lock in, I think, a three-year purchase at twelve cents kilowatt hour, which is not bad considering the climate. But we were in a uh eight point eight cent uh contract. So the generation of those credits outside of offsetting our carbon impact uh will allow us to basically have a net zero cost impact in those budgets despite the increasing supply cost. We are also looking to continue to build on them and as part of this uh evaluation of our Schedule Z and our solar credits, um believe there's sufficient capacity for us to generate more uh as part of the design and construction of Blanchett A M Schools. Came up a lot from both a sustainability and a financial perspective that uh we were unsure of the generation capacity at the time, but we've wanted our roof to be solar ready. It is, and we're working with our consultants, with schools, public works um to start that process and potentially as early as this time meeting in May, have voters authorize the multi-decade lease agreements that are typically related to those solar agreements to generate uh more solar. So that's a good thing. Education assessments, so Southeastern Regional School, as folks might recall, we've seen some double-digit percent increases there because of increased enrollment of Easton students. Uh enrollment has now decreased this year and so the assessment is actually decreasing fourteen percent, which cut two hundred and seventeen thousand out of the uh the budget, which reduced the uh deficit accordingly. Um so that's obviously very welcome news. Uh and then debt service has been adjusted based on recent borrowing activity, resulting in a a minor increase to the exempt debt of fifty thousand uh and a modest decrease of non-exempt debt for a net of thirty six thousand.
And the cherry sheet, did you say that?
Uh thank you. So the cherry sheet I touched on, I kind of lumped those together with state bills. So the cherry sheet, uh state uh it issues revenue to municipalities, it also issues charges. Uh so the cherry sheet assessments reflective of increased charges to Easton, charter, school tuition, things of that nature. So uh the governor's budget uh included thirty six thousand fewer dollars on the revenue side of the state's ledger and increased the bill that we pay by forty five thousand, so you get a net um impact of adding eighty thousand and change to our deficit.
Let's hope they don't go with the governor's budget.
I agree. Um so last uh budget cycle, um the former governor's budget started in a similar place, minimum made of thirty dollars, unrestricted general government aid at two point seven percent. Um and the House and Senate, including Easton's uh reps um and and Senator Timmeltie uh uh advocated to double that and were successful. So both the House and Senate doubled those and we ended up in a better place. Still, certainly not out of the woods for us financially from a structural revenue deficit standpoint, but much welcome. If that happens again, that's a swing of a hundred plus thousand, which can make a pretty, I mean, when you're when you're in the six figures to close the deficit, that makes that makes a big difference. That's a job. Um so.
Well, we talked about that at the MMA Policy Committee um a couple of weeks ago and there's, I think, about eighty two communities that fall into the same category that Easton does with the uh I'll help me with the word, uh minimum made.
Minimum, right. It's actually, it's 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 worse if you look, it's a hundred and nineteen. So you would think this would get more attention.
Oh, it is? Oh, I thought it was only two. I'm mixing it up with another back, but uh
It's. No, that is.
But they are really, they are trying to, the legislators are trying to to do something about that, so.
Right, which would be uh very helpful because it's, it is um saying, it should go without saying, I always feel like it's not appropriate because if you stop saying it, people stop paying attention. Getting a hundred thousand dollars of new revenue uh for a forty five million dollar district is not positive. It it doesn't work. Um and it and it forces a community that otherwise has a lot going for it financially to make choices that we don't want to be making about services.
Well, I think it's also confusing to the people, you know, that that are real uh policy wonks that follow this stuff closely to hear that all this, you know, uh the Opportunity Act is bringing all this educational funding to communities. And it, you know, it is to a lot of communities that really need it, especially the gateway cities or communities, it's really gonna be helpful.
That's right.
Uh but it it doesn't help us in that same way. So, you know, it can be confusing, like why, why are we still having trouble with the budget?
Correct. Right, it it's it's super confusing and it's very frustrating. I mean, even even within our, even within the funds, we have a certain level of direct control. We're thinking about, we simultaneously are in a position where uh finance extreme authorized by state law, CPA can make these incredible investments, right? Yet other finance finance streams coming from a state are sub-one percent or to level funded for eleven years. And we're managing a lot of these and and folks see that against their tax bill, which is that will be increased. Uh and then if they tune in and hear that it's not planned, I say, what are these people doing? Right?
And it's not like we're a business where we can raise rates or raise, you know, uh.
On very, very, very few things. That's right.
Yeah, so um so what makes it tough?
Dottie and I made a point with um with Representative Doherty a couple of weeks ago about the very specifics you're talking about now. Um and we will make those uh uh discussion, had those discussions with both Senator and and Representative Cassidy.
And and I know our representative's being Superintendent Cabal, who's also very vocal in the state.
You sent a very detailed explanation of our concerns to our whole delegation.
Yes, thank you. And they've been receptive to it again. Last year, this was successful, right? This came up at Finance Committee where um sometimes it feels like it's my job to just be a rain cloud at various public bodies. Um and they asked, you know, is there a place for advocacy? I said, there's always a place for advocacy. And last year, uh you know, the delegation translated that and they did, they did double that. That makes a large difference. And it also permanently increases based on you start in front of the next incremental budget, right? So we will keep working at that. Uh but it's, the the governor's budget is certainly all we're all to see.
And we also made the point about chapter ninety, too.
Correct. That that's, that continues to be a disappointing um area um that that we're all, that's shared across the entire state.
Okay, I'm really surprised that that hasn't changed because that's one of the top priorities of the Mass Municipal Association and they they, you know, meet with them every year to talk about it and it just seems like that would be an easier one, although they are.
Minimum eighty or chapter ninety?
The chapter ninety.
Chapter ninety, yeah.
Um and but they are, they have increased funding in the bucket, there's gonna be grant funding available now, so.
Right, which is, which is obviously, it's it's appreciated and we'll go after it. Um but chapter ninety is a tried true existing pipeline for funds that's guaranteed and you could build budgets and capital plans off of. It's 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 very difficult to, you can't build a pavement management plan that costs out capital for maybe for three to five years, assuming competitive grant wars. Right, so uh it would be really, really beneficial to see that number move. It's, you know, a lot of these end up being contracts that are managed with jobs. I I would hope to see a change to.
We'll keep advocating.
I'm sure we will.
Uh so where does this leave us um as far as our operations? So what this memo does not have is any reductions to those preliminary numbers for the town, preliminary budget requests, and schools as placeholder uh from February twenty seventh. We've basically trimmed back where we cannot fix costs. We've looked, taken a look at revenues and we'll do that again. But a lot of the remaining delta and the distance we need to cover is going to need to come out, reducing those uh preliminary asks. And so I I always feel like this is a helpful figure to look at because you start getting into nine-digit numbers um and it it can just kind of get all in replacement. The new revenue we expect next year is two point eight million. When you get, when you cost out a fixed cost, we have to pay, right? The assessments, debt, pension increases, et cetera. Those costs collectively are eight hundred thirty five grand. So that truly leaves the entire town with, which again, our budget is over one hundred million, at least one point nine million total of new funding available that can fund any increases to the entire public school system and every single town department.
That's great.
The preliminary request between schools and town was a million above that and that's why, if you net that out, that is exactly the deficit that's currently running. So um so that's 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 the the gap we have to close.
So in the penis side, uh what, I see you've reduced it. Um and that's the new deficit amount?
Yes, nine hundred sixty two thousand.
Uh out of those, out of that, how much has the school contributed to the reduction?
Technically not, just as town departments have technically not either. That's what I'm gonna say, which we we have not and we're now in that process. We basically notify departments, get ready to 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 cut.
Okay. Okay.
And that's the purpose of this and we have spoken with the superintendent. If they have a concurrent process, it's obviously independent on state law.
Hmm.
We're gonna work together, try and get there. Um but yeah, that's that's why, um this is not to say anyone has done more than the other, anything like that.
No, play everybody.
But we're 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 kind of, the goal here is that we're we're starting in the same place and we we need to, yes, we need to reduce um
Sparsibility.
Yeah, it can't, I mean, if you, the, just because of the size of the respective budgets, the total requested increase for town is one point one million, which is more than the typically requested and we will not be able to fund that. That's very clear. Uh but if all of the remaining deficit had to come out of that bucket, then the town would basically get zero. Um which is not, I don't think anyone's expectation. We know it worked well with the schools uh in the past and we anticipate that will go forward. So uh this has an impact, a spillover effect on capital planning. Uh so we touched on that briefly tonight with CPA. That's a good segue. So we have some areas, um while the total fixed cost budget is in the three-ish percent range, which is frankly quite good in this environment, there's certain subcategories in there that are more than five percent increases year over year. And those certainly can can challenge us in a prop two and a half environment and with kind of stagnant state revenue. But five percent increases on the operating side in some areas pale in compared to double-digit or sometimes triple-digit percent increases uh we are seeing, depending on what you do for work, the folks may see on supply material with construction. uh we are seeing, depending on what you do for work, the folks may see on supply material with construction costs, which is really starting to manifest on capital budget requests. Uh items that were one to two million five years ago are four to five million now in some cases. Um and so for this year, so we have the operating process and a concurrently, we have the capital planning committee that Wendy supports uh that that I work with, um they have their capital process going on. The preliminary asks for this fiscal year alone, not the five-year CIP total, preliminary ask for fiscal twenty-four for just general fund capital is in excess of ten million dollars. Um these are all like worthwhile projects. There's emergency vehicles, there's proportional fund or partial funding of things like the R O, campus, uh security-related items. Our annual general fund investment capacity is closer to two to three million. So we have, depending on how you wanna count it, three to five times our annual capacity has been requested right out of the gates. We're not, we're not gonna be able to fund all of that. Um so what this does and why this is in the operating budget memo is I think it's a good time to refocus that um alternative funding sources and strategies are really, really critical uh when we're in a posture like this. That includes um where CPA thinks it's appropriate, um you know, CPA funding for eligible uh assets. So um they've unanimously recommended uh significant investments uh for some recreational assets, which um I I certainly very much appreciate, uh because again, this ten-plus million request for the capital plan doesn't double count that. So with that five-plus million CPA, if CPA did not exist, and then that ten-plus million that we can afford would be fifteen. That we still would only have two to three million to work with. So having um investment capacity, that's really important and their uh their work's very much appreciated. It also underscores the uh really huge importance of uh large-scale asset replacement uh when it comes to uh facilities that are just pass-throughs of life. That includes um for a few reasons. One is you gotta put a new facility on the back, I mean you also bat offline tens of millions of backlot capital that you're just, you can't get to for a variety of financial reasons, but also just for triggering certain codes that make it not feasible. This is the same rationale that led to um the construction of the Blanch Ames Elementary School. It's the same rationale we're building on with the replacement of T S Fire Public Works where even if the general fund capital budget had the capacity, which it does not, the triggering of certain code requirements for accessibility, uh site work requirements would make it as much amount more to try to repair and renovate these facilities in place. And so when uh the public is willing to consider it, support it, things like debt exclusions are really important tools uh for uh taking uh for fixing tens of millions in backlot capital.
It also opens up opportunities for um properties, you know, when when the new uh facilities are built, those older properties can be sold.
That's right, and we're working on that now with more all and center school.
Every purpose.
So where does this leave us? Um so we have uh it's 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 doable in my opinion. Uh we have nine hundred sixty-two thousand left that we have to eliminate. Um and we have scheduled the budget uh meetings, the joint meetings between finance meetings, like we're for Monday and Wednesday, April twenty-four, twenty-six. And so I've laid out in this memo, which will be distributed and I'm suggesting it here as well, um that uh because a lot of these have to come from reductions in the preliminary budget increase requests and placeholders, um that we kind of lay out in our respective presentations as much information as we can. Um so for town and school departments, we'll both need to work uh together to reduce those preliminary uh requests and placeholders. For perspective, each one percent reduction uh to the town is two hundred and one thousand and four hundred and seventy-five thousand from schools. Um to minimize the impact on service levels, um both departments should look to offset reductions in those operating budget requests by utilizing existing revolving or enterprise fund balances, uh where appropriate, we'll work with Wendy and uh Andrea and Dr. Cabal to do so. Um when possible, any personnel adjustments or new recurring service costs that may have have to come online. The fiscal twenty-four should be considered for partial implementation, perhaps on July, uh January rather than July one. That gives you two years to phase in that operating cost rather than all at once. And we will also be doing a follow-up review of revenue estimates and fixed costs uh to reassess any old areas of opportunity uh for adjustments to minimize fixed cost burdens uh or increase revenue forecast along with advocating on the stated front. So this will be a challenging approach, but I think it's the right one. Um it's consistent, we had a discussion a bunch of subcommittee um about a month ago, talking about where our reserves stand. They're in a very healthy place uh because we've had some tight budget cycles. Um and this budget's already proposing carry it forward, the same amount of free cash as we used last year uh and starting the the kind of um phasing out of ARPA revenue replacement. Even though we could leverage more, we don't wanna create an enormous financial cliff um when that program expires in fiscal twenty-five. So um this this budget in full transparency does not use as much reserve funds as your own policies would allow it to. Um but in my view, that's more a function of how unusually high free cash certifications have been, right? So you have that fifty percent of free cash is the max target and for almost every year we hit the max because we have a huge, we're huge. We got a structural revenue deficit, we're in state aid. Uh if you kind of leverage that to the max, free cash instead of a million in the budget would be two. You can make the deficit go away immediately. But that just buys you another million, you have to cut it next year. So um we've been here before, schools have been here before, we've we've gotten through it. I think we can um work with that and um all our departments will be getting a public works place fire and, you know, prioritizing um because we're for services. Um but there are certain areas, I know that I have flagged as, there's very few, there was very, very few proposed additions of staff or anything uh from town. We wanted to increase, you know, financial management uh or financial illness staff. We don't have any. Um and just it's it's needed and it'd be certainly helpful with some of the complex uh financial modeling, some of the analysis we do. Some of these, that most would probably come to you not three hours before your meetings, but we we just can't. So that's not gonna make a cut, which we'll continue to understaff finance and administration, but we just can't do it. That's where we're at.
Comments, questions? Mark, I can see you're bringing.
This 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 is still work ahead and there's a job to be done and, you know, we do it every year and we're always put in a difficult position and you guys pull it together and manage through and um we're not there yet, but we will be.
Inside though, looking at the list of uh, you know, increases by department, uh I'm, you know, you'd think it would be easy to say, oh, well, first AI look is one of the biggest increases and then to see what they are. It's like, oh, well, you know, you can't cut that one because that's because of this other thing or, you know, IT, they always have such a small increase. He's got a little bigger increase than this year. Well, we have cyber issues to worry about and and uh, you know, sometimes not increasing a budget is dangerous to the purposes of that of that line. I couldn't, I couldn't look through one that was a standout that said, oh, well, yeah, of course you can reduce that one. It's no longer gonna be tough.
I think, I think the smaller the budget, the harder it is. They just have less less to work with, but the larger budgets, there is room. Um you know, there is, you know, the schools, if they look at their budget with twenty million, fifty?
Forty-five.
Forty-five million. I know it's gonna hurt, but if you if if you had a business that had forty-five million dollars in costs and you had to reduce it by half a million dollars, you could do that and still function.
Sure, I I do think it it's important.
And I'm saying it's easy, it's easy, it is.
Right, it it it's 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 important to point out though that we have done this successfully for a very long time.
Yes. Right.
And so necessarily, even with larger budgets like like the schools or police, fire, public works, you start really, really, really stretching the ability to re-uh organize those finances without just cutting uh services, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we've had some years where we did it, right? We 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 cut dozens of jobs with COVID-ten.
Mm-hmm. That's yours.
Um and we're not uh, we're, we've only very incrementally built back up.
Hmm.
Um so it it, yes, I mean mathematically, we have some town departments whose entire department budget is less than a half of the revenue. Cut that and the department closes and we're gonna keep on, uh.
Exactly, that was just probably what I was trying to make.
Sure, um but it is, it does, it gets, it gets um, it it does get harder with each successive year, right?
Mm-hmm.
The the ability to get creative in the margins gets difficult and we're gonna keep keep at it and we're not.
No choice.
We're
No choice, exactly.
Um you're not paying me to give up. Uh so, you know, and we we do, we have a lot of, there's a lot of good being done. It means departments and the schools here, there's a lot of good projects being done. We've been very successful with grants and state federal funding and we're gonna continue to do that. Um so the message from this is certainly not, you know, we're closing shop, we're we are certainly not at the strike we could be, that we'd like to be for the community, the people we serve. Um we just have certain limitations that make that not doable. But we'll still um, you know, I think be in excellent community, we have an excellent school system. Um it's, but it'll be, it'll be tough, you know, certainly there may be some programs uh that we just can't either get off the ground or continue uh with the financing at the current stance.
It's a challenge being forced to address this problem that's systemic in ways that you're you're trying to talk about systemically, but making very little ground. We're forced to do these things year over year that are chipping away at solving short-term problems, but we can't make that progress in the long-term problems, the
On some of them, yes.
It's just, it just feels very frustrating.
It 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 is. Um yeah, and the tools that we are statutorily statutorily given are not ones that um aren't necessarily desirable, right? I mean, it'd be really, the only major way around this is regular significant overrides.
Yeah.
And some minimum made categories have chosen that, but then a lot of people very literally are priced out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, have to sell their homes now.
Yeah.
It's not quite climate change.
So it's, so it's, it's a very, it doesn't mean it's right or wrong, right? Um.
Yeah.
It's a delicate balance.
It's a, it's a, it's a difficult balance.
But it also means for us to put some more pressure on our our legislators in terms of pointing out where we stand, which is why we sent the material that you introduced for us and had those conversations already about this, this is, this is unsustainable. We have to, you got, it's not just one community, it's a hundred and nineteen communities in terms of minimum made, so we need to really focus on that as well at the same time.
Absolutely.
We've made efforts this year to split the tax rate, which I know doesn't, you know, start a great payoff this year, but you know, down the line, there's to come, it's a smart decision.
I agree.
So. We've, we've, we have and we've made progress. That's why I'm a, the first iteration of Just For Life, I didn't reiterate it here. We've made really important financial progress, you know, saving millions on energy.
Yes.
Um we're distributing hundreds of thousands of direct financial aid to folks in need uh through ARPA. You know, we are, and we are, we are making, I I think we're making, we are making lasting, permanent progress on certain things with energy and um.
I was being pessimistic.
That's okay, I mean, it's easy to feel that way. Um you know, someone on the Finance Committee pointed out, they basically said, uh they told me, I was in your seat uh that night and they said, you know, those are all fair points, these are real challenges. I do wanna point out that this is a great place, a lot of good work's been done, a lot of good progress has been done.
It's true.
Um you know, we have really, really, really top-notch employees um who do really great work and uh, you know, we're making, we are making progress, right? I mean, think of just the items you've had tonight, you know, uh working with labor groups, your department leaving civil service and voluntarily talking to people on the cameras, that's a good thing. You have a community paramedics in the fire, that's a great thing. We've brought on uh the community mental health days, on a work with police and health and community services. We have health and community services. Um somebody in Citizens Academy last week, they moved from a different part of the country and they said, they were looking at your chart. And I said, oh, health and community services, that's so interesting. On municipal level, that's, those are things that there's enough kind of energy and and care for that people are employed to do. I said, yeah, I mean, yes, and and we're very fortunate, we have great people working there. Um and they just sort of related that that's kind of baked into to living here.
Hmm.
Um so we we have made a lot of good progress. It was full day, okay?
And for, full day, buddy, gone.
Um um I think the the challenge is there's always more to do. Um and we have a lot of people, uh everyone in this room that want to keep doing better and doing more, but we do have to kind of make um you know, it's like picking your kids, right? Between the kids, you have to, and we'll see again, we we've had.
There's never been a baby coming there for sex.
Um you know, the departments all have such compelling, well-vetted, data-supported, you know, claims to say how they could do more. But you know, we have to bounce budget, so we will, um we'll.
And also, we we do things and make policies to try to keep Easton as affordable as we can for people and we get public support to do that uh at the town meeting, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we were, we had the community vote to allocate a quarter million of CPA funds, like in the complete dark days of COVID for rent relief.
Yep.
Right, I mean, we, we, people, we've made progress, been a lot of good here, but it is, it is, it is, it's hard. Um and it's, it's, it's super, super, super frustrating to kind of, no matter how much the world changes or markets change or gold pen knocks change, you come back like, I had a minimum made.
Budget season is this roller coaster ride of like feeling the good feelings, the things you got to, you know, you achieved, like you've just summarized and then feel those lows of of man, this is just painful and it's just what it is.
Well, thank you very much for the updates. You do a very good job of keeping it easy to understand for people. I hope people at home are watching. Um I hope that people will Google website and take a look at all, you know, the transformation from when the first iteration comes out and all the work that goes and the thought that goes through to shaping it to what it is again. We go to town meeting one night and it looks like it was so easy, everything's, everything's up there, it's ready to go. Yeah.
Those things are presented in town, yeah. If it if it gets presented.
All right, excellent. Any other questions?
Good.
Yes, thank you for, yeah, thank you and everybody involved for all the paperwork and the process.
Happy to do it, thank you.
All right, uh I think we are up again. So we have the acceptance of the minutes for March thirteenth.
So do Brian, Second, Lamb.
Audrey and Lamb, all in favor? Do you know it's, uh town administrator votes, anything new?
Depot Street is starting final paving in April, so that's a a good project. Um that was funded ninety percent by state total fund. So the final paving, that's gonna start some point in April. We'll get the exact date, we'll push that out uh through social media. We're gonna try and be aggressive and we're gonna done before we're really into summer. I don't like come into a specific date. Um and we're, we're exploring options to get it done quick. Um so that'll be final paving, striping, um so that'll be, that's just been a great project.
Great. Um according to the uh town crier, which I just pulled up to kind of remind myself of some of the things. Um there's gonna be work on Foundry Street from seven AM to four PM, Monday through Friday, weather permitting, uh from Old Foundry Street to Norton Ave. And uh Norton Ave from Foundry Street to Old Foundry Street, did I say that right?
Cause they're working on Norton Ave right now.
Replacing existing water mains, so people should uh be prepared for intermittent lane flooding.
I remember that conversation. I think I asked how many feet it was. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, they started, they started it early and it's been a long warm it's been.
Hmm.
Yeah, they done it all the way down Foundry and now they're on Norton Ave.
Yep, so uh some some of the notable things in the town crier, um uh there's some job openings for the town that people should take a look at. There's volunteer opportunities in the town that people should look at. And then we have election day coming up Saturday, April twenty-second from ten to four. Uh the deadline to register to vote is five PM Wednesday, April twelfth. And vote by mail application is Friday, April fourteenth. So there is an opportunity for everybody to vote, whether you're on vacation, whether or uh whether you have um whether you have uh different conflicts to be able to get there. So make sure that you you vote, it's very important and uh make your voice heard. Craig, any?
Yeah, I just, uh you mentioned it briefly, um on Sunday the twenty-sixth, there was the TCS Shovel Town Road Race, which Mr. Reed was was involved in.
I ran, I didn't do any work, just to be clear.
There were, there were, I believe, over six hundred runners registered. I'm not sure exactly how many actually ran, but it was, it was
A lot.
It was a lot. The weather was perfect. Um and the the shout-out goes to um the Kemper family, Adam and and Tracy Kemper, because they pulled this whole thing together and it is an enormous job. There were probably seventy-five volunteers there helping out. Um and uh lots of folks watching the race. Um and uh it was, it was, it was quite a day. That was good.
I heard you had a pretty good time, too.
I missed Jamie by four seconds.
But you missed him.
I would believe it. I I I fully acknowledge you, yeah, they don't, you know, you were there, I was success.
I think. The top runner came in about seventeen minutes or.
Wild, yeah, I believe they were about top, top uh men and women, were a brother or sister duo.
It was flying.
Um so that was a fast house.
Oh, they were, they were, and then they had people with strollers. It was like, it was
It was, it was really nice, I
It was a great thing, a great thing.
Great, man, thank you, the title.
Kudos to the Kemper family for that, I I'm gonna say.
Great, thank you. Uh Mark? Great, thank you, uh Mark?
I don't have anything.
Jamie, I mean, that's, you know. Because it's gonna be a long day.
I have a Jamie, there's nothing to do. I have nothing either.
Thank you, excellent, all right, well, um thank you, I know this is a great meeting, lots of really great information, and with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Shalom, Roger, second, Liam.
Roger and Liam, all in favor, unanimous.
Thank you all.
See you next time, thanks for filming.